Mayor, whenever you're ready.
Welcome to the February 25th, 2025 Milbury City Council Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. City Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Riley.
Here.
Councilmember Rinaldi.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hollibur.
Present.
Mayor Feng.
Hi.
All members of the City Council are present.
All right, thank you so much. And for those who are able, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Please be seated. And we will begin tonight's meeting with the first item, which is a ceremonial presentation and proclaiming the proclamation proclaiming March 8th, 2025 as International Women's Day. And whereas the International Women's Day is celebrated globally each year on March 8th and providing an opportunity to reflect on the progress made by women, recognize their achievement and celebrate their ongoing contributions to our society. And whereas the theme for 2025 International Women's Day is accelerate actions urging individuals, communities and organizations to take current steps towards gender equality by fostering a world where women can thrive and lead in all aspects of life. And whereas the City of Milbury honored the legacies of women who have shaped history and continue to fight for equal representations across all intersections of society, challenging systemic barriers and creating space for their voices to be heard and valued in communities everywhere. Whereas women have played and continue to play a vital role in shaping our nations and our community through their leadership and resilience and continually pushing the boundaries of what is possible and striving to make positive changes. And whereas despite the invaluable contributions women have made, they still face persistent inequalities that hinders their full potential and these challenges must be addressed urgently. Whereas even in the face of these challenges, women are leading the way in their communities, ensuring progress and strengthening the fabrics of society through their dedications, resilience and visions. Whereas International Women's Day provides an important opportunity to highlight the continued strides women have made in advocating for equality and renew the call to accelerate actions and advancing the rights and opportunity for women and girls worldwide. Now therefore, we, the members of the Milbury City Council, do hereby proclaim March 8th, 2025 as International Women's Day. And I just also want to take a moment to thank every woman in our organization and our city for your commitment and for all the work that you do for our community every day, all the ladies in the audience, as well as those who are in the committees and commission. I also want to thank my mom, my sister, my wife and my daughter, otherwise I wouldn't be here today. And so, you know, and I think goes to show to every one of us as well on how important it is to continue to lift up nearly half of our population in this world. Thank you so much for all your effort and and all your continued support from all of our women every day. Thank you all. And so we invite all the women on our Milbury City staff to accept this proclamation and for March 8th, 2025 as International Women's Day. And City Attorney Laurie Liu, thanks for joining us today, Assistant City Manager and Human Resource Director Isabel Carlos, Recreation Director Hannah Moran, City Clerk Ling Tran, PIO Justin Bleeker, Senior Environmental Program Manager Andrea Papa John, and Senior Administrative Analyst Juan Yi Liang, and Senior Officer Assistant Nicole Huang. And also all of our commissioners and former mayors as well, if you can join us for a photo opportunity. And also if you have a few words for us. Does anyone want to send a representative?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the City Council. So on behalf of the women of the City of Milbury Organization and also of the City of Milbury Community, we are honored to receive this proclamation. As mentioned, this year's campaign theme is to accelerate action to women's equality. And two ways we can support that theme as individuals and as leaders is to increase momentum and to accelerate actions to forge women's economic empowerment and to support women in leadership roles. The International Women's Day Accelerate Action Strike a Pose Solidarity this year is the muscle pose. And so I think it's very befitting because that represents the strength that women bring into the workplace, into the home, into the community and beyond. And so on behalf of the women of Milbury, we thank you and we are honored to receive this proclamation.
Thank you, Ms. Carlos. And for all of us, would you please join us for a photo? Thanks, everybody. And then we have next up as the combination for our retiring deputy, Mike Grogan. Vice Mayor?
Hey, whereas Deputy Sheriff Mike Grogan has dedicated 44 years to serving and protecting the public with unwavering commitment, integrity and professionalism. Throughout his distinguished career, Deputy Grogan has exemplified the highest standards for law enforcement, ensuring the safety and well-being of the communities he served. And whereas Deputy Grogan played a vital leadership role as captain in the Milbury during the transition to the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, demonstrating exceptional leadership, adaptability and dedication to a smooth transition. And steadfast commitment to public safety, mentorship of fellow officers and dedication to community engagement have left an indelible mark on the City of Milbury and beyond. And whereas as he embarks on his well-earned retirement, the City of Milbury expresses its profound gratitude for his service and extends his best wishes for a future filled with health, happiness and fulfillment. And now therefore, on behalf of the members of the Milbury City Council, we do hereby express our gratitude and commend Deputy Sheriff Mike Grogan. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Grogan. Deputy Grogan, would you please join us? Would you like to have a few words for us?
I really appreciate this recognition. I started with the Milbury Police Department in March of 1982, so I've seen a lot of city councils and a lot of city managers. And we've had a lot of good city councils and city managers, but you folks are one of those exceptional city councils. And Mr. Williams, you've been very supportive of us. You provided us with state-of-the-art rain gear just recently. And you've put on luncheons for us. And I can assure you, all the deputy sheriffs appreciate what you do for us. So thank you.
And thank you for 44 years of your service to our community and keeping us safe every day. We really appreciate it. All right, can we join us for a photo and all your colleagues as well? Yes, sir. Sure, of course. Would you like to have a few words for us, Chief?
Sir, thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. So these guys are about to hit the streets again, but just want to repu-- excuse me, recognize Deputy Grogan. Such a tremendous example of what a law enforcement leader should be, the humility, the call to action, excuse me, the purpose. You would never know by talking to Mike the history that he has and the experience because such a humble young man, excuse me, young man, well, I guess young man compared to some. But just a tremendous resource for the city, a tremendous resource for myself. You know, I've talked to Mike on countless occasions and just, just an amazing individual. And he's going to be sorely missed, but he's not going to be going too far. And I'm sure we may still see him around town, but just an amazing man. And we're very fortunate to have had his time here in town and to have learned from him. And you'll be missed, Mike. So thank you very much for your service and God bless.
All right. Thank you so much, Deputy Grogan. All right, so moving on to the next agenda item, which is the Agenda Overview and Staff Briefing. City Manager Tom Williams, would you please provide us with a City Manager update?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening to you, Members of the-- Tom Williams, City Manager. Couple of updates for us. First and foremost, our spring and summer recreation program is open. Registration will start March 3rd, which is next Monday. The summer activity guide has been mailed, so residents will be receiving the activity guide in their mailbox if they haven't already this week. So we're excited. Recreation staff is gearing up for our spring and summer programs, which includes our very popular adventure camp during the spring break and throughout the summer. Those camps will occur at Taylor Middle School as our counselors lead arts and crafts, games, sports activities, and a great all-around summer activity program for for the youth in Milbury. Spots do fill up quickly, so we do encourage parents to register as soon as possible. I mean, this can sell out within within two weeks. So definitely encourage parents to register early. The online registration programs are available on our recreation website, also just at bit.ly/milrec. So bit.ly/mi-l-r-e-c for more information. We also have committee and commission vacancies. Our recruitment is open. Information is also on our website, so we encourage business owners and residents to look on our website and apply for the various vacancies that we have. We we have one vacancy in our Cultural Arts Advisory Committee, one vacancy in our Sister Cities Commission, or actually two vacancies in our Sister City Commission, one alternate vacancy in our Senior Advisory Committee and our upcoming Citizens Oversight Committee for the TOT and fire assessment that was recently adopted by the voters. That will be seven members that the City Council will ultimately select, one from each district and two at large. We had one information meeting last Saturday. We have a second information meeting Wednesday, March 5th, that's a week from tomorrow at 6:00 PM. That will be at the Milbury Recreation Center. So anybody that's interested in commission, committee vacancies, please log on our website. Anybody interested in the committee oversight information for the transit occupancy tax revenue and the fire assessment, please attend the meeting next Wednesday, March 5th at 6:00 PM at the REC Center. Also, we have a very exciting program that our ZIP code is actually qualified for starting now. And it's the 2025 Earthquake Race and Bolt Grant Program. So it's known as the EBB Grant Program. And this is open to all property owners. And the California program offers $3,000 to help secure homes, you know, bolted down foundations, bolted down walls for earthquake and seismic proofing. And so this program at $3,000 is is a nice grant program. It's available again within our ZIP code. The application window is January 15th through March 26th, so it's open now. It closes March 26th. Also, there's an extra help program component to this, so any household earning less than $89,040 may qualify for up to $7,000 actually in grant funding for the retrofitting of their residence for earthquake safety. How to apply, you can visit our website, but also this is kind of a long email address. It's just www-california-residential-mitigationprogram.com. So all one word, CaliforniaResidentialMitigationProgram.com. Again, this is on our website. I encourage all property owners to take a look at this. And if you have not seismically retrofitted your home, this is a great opportunity to do so. All right, upcoming events, again, Wednesday, March 5th is our Citizens Oversight Committee meeting for the TOT and Fire Assessment, again, 6:00 PM at the Milbury Recreation Center. Friday, March 7th, a week from this Friday, we have a summer camp fair, so you can join our recreation staff. If you're not sure what the summer program entails, this will be an information program for parents and guardians to come see what our summer camp and programs are all about. It will take place again Friday, March 7th from 4:00 to 6:00 PM in the Recreation Center. And just if we can't encourage people, the first hundred people will will provide pizza for them. So the first hundred visitors get pizza for attending the information meeting. Also, then Saturday, March 8th, the following day is our Senior and Adult Paint and Coffee Class. Again, this is a great program by our Recreation Department for relaxing morning of painting and coffee that starts at 10:30 AM at the Milbury Recreation Center, 10:00 to noon. And it's a it's a lesson on hummingbird and cactus painting is what the artist or the person giving the class will will teach. So again, great program, March 8th, Saturday, 10:30 AM to noon is a painting and coffee class, and so fun program. Also, the March 11th, which is Tuesday, is the monthly senior luncheon program. I know many of the council members have been enjoying that senior lunch program over at the Recreation Center. It starts at 11:30, goes to 1:30 PM on Tuesday, March 11th. The senior lunch program is a great place to connect with community, play games, enjoy musical entertainment. It's $5 per person or free if it's your birthday or whatever amount somebody has the ability to pay. So RSVP on our website if you're interested. And so we'll continue with the monthly lunch program. So Mayor, that is a summary of what is happening. And again, that earthquake bolt program, I very much encourage our property owners to take advantage of it and contact us for more information or our website.
Thank you so much, City Manager Tom Williams. All right, moving on to the approval of minutes, we have the closed session meeting minutes of January 14, 2025. Any council comments or discussions on this item? Otherwise, I entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
A motion from Councilmember Rinaldi. One second. There you go. All right, yeah, we have a second from Councilmember Nguyen. Please cast your vote.
Once you select the vote that you would like from your little screen, you could go ahead and leave it if that is the accurate vote. Mayor, would you like me to display a vote?
Okay, go ahead.
Councilmember Riley, can you please cast your vote?
There we go.
The meeting minutes passed by a 5-0.
Thank you so much. All right. Remember, it's been a number of years since we used this again, so it's good to bring it back. Take a little to get used to, but I'm sure we'll get proficient at it quickly here. All right, so moving on to the next item, which is an oral report from City Committee and Commission Chair. Tonight, we have the adoption of a calendar year 2025 for the Youth Advisory Committee Work Plan. It's good to have you, Zareen.
Hello, City Council and Mayor. My name is Zareen Chang and I'm the Chair of the City of Milbury Youth Advisory Committee. Today, I'll be giving the Youth Advisory Committee Calendar Work 2025 Work Plan. So this is the roster for the Youth Advisory Committee. Out of the three years that I've been on this committee, this is the first year where we've had a full roster. And so my name is Zareen Chang and I'm the Chair. Anderson Feng is the Vice Chair. Abigail Lim is currently a middle schooler. Daniel Dilemma is a middle schooler at Taylor Middle School. Derek Dilemma is a freshman at Mills High School. Hannah Lim is a sophomore at Lake Woldenberg in San Francisco. Keian Chen is a senior at Mills High School. Madison Douglas is a freshman at Mills High School. Shre Perik is a freshman at Mills High School. And Caitlin Chun is a junior at Mills High School. And so this is a very, very great roster. As you can see, we actually have two sets of twins. Abigail Lim and Hannah Lim don't actually go to school in Milbury, but they do reside in Milbury. So I believe that they can bring really fresh perspectives to the City of Milbury Youth Advisory Committee as we better represent, you know, the youth in Milbury. They don't necessarily attend Milbury schools, but they do reside in Milbury. And then the two brothers, Daniel Dilemma and Derek Dilemma, actually came from our youth legislative program that is held in Milbury every summer. And so it's great to see how the youth are in action after learning about the government programs. Next slide. So this is a little bit of our 2024 review. We had a couple of youth and teen programming and events, one of them being that we held a one-week legislative camp, actually in this chamber right here, in support of the Mills High School Girls Who Code Program. We also had a joint committee program where we planned and executed a trivia game event with the Senior Advisory Committee and the Parks and Recreation Commission as well. That was a great hit, as well as the community program where we held a senior tech program at the Recreation Center, as well as a Thanksgiving free drive in partnership with the Samaritan House. Next slide. So these are our 2025 work plan goals. And so the first one would obviously be the advisory body to the City Council. This is an ongoing activity where we serve as the recommending body for matters as the finding resolution number 16 and 37. And so the timeline for this is ongoing and the primary lead would be the full members of the Youth Advisory Committee. The second task is program and fees. So as needed, we make reviews and make recommendations to the Parks and Recreation Commission for review by the City Council for Parks and Recreation Operation and Programming. The timeline is this is for the full year and the primary lead would be all the Youth Advisory Committee members. Next slide. And so our third task is one of the youth legislative camps that I went over earlier. And so the Milbury Youth Advisory Committee will host a one-week legislation summer camp in this council chamber. And the goal of this program is to educate middle schoolers about the importance of government and law. We also go over a lot of mock trial, Supreme Court simulations, how a bill gets passed, and even city council simulations like this. So it's super similar to what's happening right now. The maximum number of participants is 20 and snacks will be provided, with the camp being around three hours per day. And so this camp will be held in June 2025. And usually, a lot of youth love to join this program. We usually have a waitlist of around 20 people, so this program is pretty popular. The cost estimate will be around $582, and that covers both the snacks for the campers as well as staff recreation time. And so the primary lead will be me, Zareen Chang. Next slide. The second youth and teen programming events we're planning to hold is the Girls Who Code. So the Youth Advisory Committee actually supports the Mills High School Girls Who Code Club, in which they host coding programs this spring in the Milbury Recreation Center. Similar to the youth legislative program, the Mills High School Girls Who Code creates programming slash coding classes to elementary-age students, and the maximum number of participants is 20. This program will actually start in April of 2025, and it will go on for around six weeks. It will happen every Friday at 4:00 PM. And so the cost estimate is no direct costs, only except for the usage of the recreation room during regular business hours. And the primary lead will be me as well. Next slide. Task number four is a community program, and here we have a Milbury food pantry. And so the Youth Advisory Committee works towards a food pantry in Milbury that will service residents of Milbury's and surrounding areas, especially Burnley Game and San Bruno. The Youth Advisory Committee plans to move forward with this by identifying an appropriate, number one, location, two, storage, and three, community lead volunteer or community nonprofit to operate this program. And so the timeline of this would be around February 2025 to December 2025. The Youth Advisory Committee actually did a youth food pantry before, like a donation, and we donated, people around in the recreation area donated around 524 items. So this is one of our ongoing projects. There is no direct costs, only except for the usage of the recreation room, and we expect other costs to be covered by donations as well. And the primary lead is Shre Perik, who's a freshman at Mills, and the secondary lead will be Daniel Dilemma, who is a middle schooler at Taylor Middle School. Next slide. One of our other community programs is a senior tech program. And so this program was actually started by a previous Youth Advisory Committee member. And this Youth Advisory Committee would like to bring back those senior technology classes. I believe it's around the third year in which it's going to be held. This program is meant to help seniors within the community improve their skills with technology, devices and programs. I personally think that this program is a really great program as, you know, every day, technology is advancing, artificial intelligence is coming into play every single day, and I think that it's great that the Milbury Youth Advisory Committee members are educating the seniors about this program. And this program will run for six weeks in the spring. The estimated timeline will be from February 2025 to April 2025, with the cost estimate going to be around $171.90. This covers the cost of the room as well as Milbury staff recreation time. And the primary lead will be Shre Perik, who is a freshman at Mills, and then Daniel Dilemma, who's a middle schooler. Next slide. Another one of our tasks for the 2025 Work Plan is a joint committee program. And this is a Youth Advisory Committee would like to host a joint trivia game with the Senior Advisory Committee. And this program will help connect two different generations, learn about one another's eras. We did one of these before, a couple months ago, and it was super fun. We played a lot of Jeopardy and we were able to learn, the youth were able to learn about the senior Youth Advisory Committees, you know, popular pop stars back in the day, and they were able to learn about, you know, the popular pop stars in today's era. And so the timeline for this will be around February 2025 to April 2025, with the cost estimate going to be around $70. That's for the usage of the recreation room as well as snacks for the Jeopardy game and the fun joint trivia game that we have. The primary lead is Madison Douglas, who actually started this program two years ago, and she's a freshman at Mills. Secondary lead will be Caitlin Chun, who is a junior at Mills High School. The Youth Advisory Committee will also collaborate with the Parks and Recreation Commission on the grand reopening of Bayside Menor Park. A couple weeks ago, the Youth Advisory Committee also volunteered at the opening of the Marina Vista Bayside Park. It was really fun. The hot dogs were really good, and it was overall a great time to celebrate the opening of a new park. The cost estimate is none, and the primary lead and secondary lead is to be determined. Next slide. And the last task is the Youth Advisory Committee marketing. And so one of the things that we talked about in the Youth Advisory Committee for the members-- in the Youth Advisory Committee for the members is to raise awareness of the committee. And to achieve this, we just propose designing and wearing branded T-shirts, such as marketing. And so we plan to create T-shirts to promote the committee and our events. We also plan to place an advertisement in the Mowbray Recreation Activity Guide about this committee. And so the timeline will be around February twenty twenty-five to May twenty twenty-five, and the cost estimate will be around a hundred and seventy-five dollars, which will cover around ten T-shirts or so. And so the primary lead would be all the Youth Advisory Committee members. Next slide. So in terms of council actions, we ask that the City Council approve by motion, adopt the calendar year twenty twenty-five Youth Advisory Committee work plan. Next slide. Okay, excellent. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Serene. Thank you for this very detailed presentation and looking at all the tasks and then all the programs that you, you know, intend to put together for this year. I mean, it's wonderful, you know, from food insecurity to working with the seniors and technologies. You know, it's just bringing the community together and identifying some of the most important aspects in our community and how our youth community can engage in and be taking a leadership in. It's wonderful to see how the Youth Advisory Committee has come together, you know, as successful as this. It warms my heart. Anyone else on the council have comments or questions for our Chair from Youth Advisory? Go ahead, Councilmember Nguyen.
So it's great that you're focusing on tech. I saw, I think, two slides on that. Me being in the technology field, I think it's great that we're letting the kids get a future or a glimpse of what's to happen for tech. My questions around A.I., you mentioned it. You have any details on how you guys are approaching A.I. and how you're teaching it to the kids?
So for the computer program, they teach a lot of things, mostly with how to use technology, for example, an iPad, iPhone. And I believe that the committee members over there would go over artificial intelligence and the way that senior Youth Advisory Committees, senior advisory members, or any seniors attending the program, can be able to utilize A.I. to help them with daily tasks, for example, with creating, you know, work plans or helping them with simple tasks. And so because artificial intelligence is so relevant in today's life, I mean, we use it everywhere in every sector these days, I feel like the committee members will develop a work plan to ensure that the seniors will be able to learn more about artificial intelligence and the role it plays in today's society. Thank you.
Thanks. Great answers. Anyone else? Okay, any public comment on this item?
Mayor, there's no Speaker slip, and there's no hands raised online.
Okay, all right, excellent. So anyone want to make a motion to support our youth?
Yes, motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Ronaldy and a second from Vice Mayor Holliver. Any final comments? Your vote, please. All good? Go ahead.
Item number four passed by a vote of five zero.
Before we end, I'd like to thank our staff, our primary liaison, Ms. Alexa Flores-Roman, as well as the Recreation Director, Ms. Hannah Moran, for attending all our meetings and ensuring that all our youth tasks are planned. So we appreciate it. Thank you so much for that. Thank you. Thank you to the Mayor and City Council as well. Thank you.
Yeah, it's also good to see you put a work plan together and know how to ask for a budget, which is good.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, opportunity here, I'd be remiss if I did not compliment Zareen and commend her on her outstanding leadership.
Very.
She was one of two that founded the legislative camp, put the whole program together, worked with her. And I mean, obviously impressive and an outstanding leader here in the community. So Zareen, you do a great job, and I commend you on your leadership. So keep up the good work. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so very much. All right, we have a next item on public communications. This is the portion of the agenda that is reserved for those who wish to comment on any item, not on tonight's agenda. However, the Speaker must address subject matter within the jurisdictions of the City Council. Every Speaker is going to have three minutes. The Speaker is to address directly to the entire council and not individual council member nor the public. And we will start with in-chamber speaker and then move on to online speaker after. We will start tonight with Grace Zhang.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and the community. My name is Grace Zhang, and this is my brother Richardson in the front row. You should come up, Richard. Okay, we are Lili Restaurant founder Jimmy's children. On behalf of my dad's family, we want to thank the city for closing the meeting in honor of our father alongside the former Mayor Doris Morris. On February ten, our dad died from a brain bleed, spending two days in the hospital. Jimmy was a great father, husband, brother, son, friend, uncle, boss, in-law, and person. In nineteen eighty-three, he borrowed money from friends and relatives and opened up Lili Restaurant with his brothers and sisters working with him. He did return the money. Since its opening, around twenty-one relatives, our dad's siblings, nieces, nephews, et cetera, have worked there over the years, truly a family business. Being generous, Jimmy donated trays of food to Tsu Chi Spring Valley Elementary School Carnival's Turnbull Children's Center, Potlucks, MCTV, and other organizations. He donated gift certificates to the Lions Club and various other foundations. A section of the donation wall in Milbury Library has Lili's name on it. In what little spare time Jimmy had, he had a passion for playing Sudoku and billiards. He also enjoyed playing mahjong with his family. Jimmy also cherished spending time with his two granddaughters, my brother's kids, Madrid and Vienna. Over one hundred and thirty people came to our dad's public viewing on February sixteen. More than my family, our family, expected. We were truly touched by all the community's support and love. At Lili, he fed people with food and spread his humor, and the community fed him back with their love, attention, and praise. We were touched that eleven years after our dad sold the restaurant to our cousins Gary and Vincent, there were customers, a husband and a wife, who wanted to see Jimmy on Thanksgiving two thousand twenty-four. Unfortunately, my dad could not recognize them. Around two thousand seventeen, he started developing Alzheimer's. The only good thing about his death was that he passed away before it got to the point where he couldn't feed himself. He was still independent. In closing, I want to thank you all for your stories of our dad, pictures, cards, flowers, hugs, and love. We are deeply honored that the Mayor and Council are closing the meeting in memory of our father. Jimmy chose well in starting his restaurant in such a loving community as Milbury, a place in the sun. Thank you.
Grace, we're sorry for your loss, but, you know, rest assured, your father had touched many hearts in our community through his love for food and, most importantly, his love of our people. And we're thankful to have him, and we're thankful, even more thankful for all of you because you're able to share, you allow us to share your father with us. We're very thankful for that. It's, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, for the touching words. We appreciate it.
Okay, may he rest in peace. Thank you. Our next speaker is Janet Focati, please.
Probably the first time I've been at this microphone where I have to lift it up. My condolences also to all of Jimmy's family. Many times I would escape from my office for lunch, Jimmy, so condolences. I have with me Kathy Quigg. And Kathy is the Treasurer for the Milbury Chamber of Commerce. I'm the Secretary for the Milbury Chamber of Commerce. The President of the Milbury Chamber of Commerce couldn't be here tonight. He had another meeting. But what I would like to do is let the council know and let the public know that the Chamber of Commerce is back in business, up and running. And we have an art and wine festival to look forward to this year. So if you don't mind, I'm going to read a letter to you. It's short, which is also unusual for me. But I want to make sure that I get all of the message across. So, dear Mayor Fung and council members, as you may have heard through your City Council representatives and through the very valuable assistance of your City Manager, Tom Williams, the Milbury Chamber of Commerce is active and working on building back membership since the impacts of COVID. And we're also working on another successful art and wine festival for Labor Day weekend of two thousand twenty-five, which will be the fifty-fourth Milbury Chamber of Commerce Art and Wine Festival. The Milbury Chamber of Commerce has been representing and encouraging business in Milbury continuously for seventy-eight years, since its founding on January first nineteen forty-seven. The Milbury Chamber of Commerce is dedicated to promoting and supporting local businesses, enhancing economic growth, which I know is something that the council's working on as well, and improving the quality of life right here in Milbury. Our mission is to serve as a catalyst for business success, advocating for our members, and providing valuable resources and networking opportunities. We envision a thriving community where businesses and residents collaborate to create a prosperous future. We greatly appreciate our partnership with the City of Milbury in working toward these common goals. Much like the California Chamber of Commerce and the U.S. Chamber of Commerce, the Milbury Chamber of Commerce is known for both its advocacy for business interests and for its business-to-business connections and resources. The Milbury Chamber is also known for its fun and prestigious ribbon-cutting ceremonies with the Mayor of Milbury doing the honors and all of the City Council members in attendance. Thank you to the city for working with us to co-sponsor these community events, such as the annual tree lighting ceremony and, most importantly, the Milbury Art and Wine Festival. This letter is also to request the street closure of Broadway for the Art and Wine Festival, and we have submitted an application for that. And this year, it will be on August thirtieth and thirty-first, and to also request services of the city to assist with the festival that weekend. The Chamber is grateful to the city for partnering with the Chamber on this, the fifty-fourth year of the Milbury Art and Wine Festival, which brings tens of thousands of people to Milbury each year and puts Milbury literally on the map. We are grateful that our city leaders recognize the importance of the festival, which is unique among festivals in the Bay Area in that it involves all of the community, which is unusual for festivals in the Bay Area. So we invite you to join us. We invite you all to join us and hope that we'll see you at the Art and Wine Festival. Thank you.
Thank you so very much, Janet Focati. All right. City Clerk, I think this is all the public speaker we have in chamber. Would you please start with online speaker?
First, the first speaker online is Dan Stedgen. Please go ahead and accept the mute.
Thank you, councilmembers. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. My name is Dan Stedgen from Pacifica. I'm the official Measure A opponent against, urging the entire City of Milbury to vote no on Measure A, the board of supervisors' illegal attempt to remove the sheriff. I'd like to familiarize yourself with a few of the election errors made by assessor recorder Mark Sheriff and urge you to agendize and overturn your previous vote of no confidence. The vast majority of Milbury voters received their state-manded D.I.G. voter guide, including sample ballot, ballot measure text, impartial analysis and ballot arguments between ten and fifteen days late. Again, this is state-mandated. Furthermore, the county has added vote centers in Burlingame, Daly City, Half Moon Bay, Pacifica, San Carlos, and South San Francisco, with one or two exceptions. These are hot pockets of Measure A support and likely represent an existing unreleased vote count by the Office of Elections. As councilmembers, you have the right to inspect the Office of Elections and demand fair and open elections for your representatives and your people. I've inspected elections in more than ten counties and believe you have a serious problem in San Mateo County. Please overturn your vote of no confidence in the San Mateo County Sheriff. This sheriff serves well and faithfully, and the City of Milbury has never been more safe. If your vote was leveraged into voting for this, vote of no confidence with threats of your felony, criminal, or illegal immigration status, please contact Robert Tripp of the San Francisco FBI immediately. Furthermore, I believe there's been a serial Brown Act violation where more than a majority of your council members in an illegal act were contacted regarding this measure in advance. Thank you very much. I order all your residents to vote no, and I ordered you to agendize and overthrow your previous measure of no confidence in the sheriff. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. City Clerk?
The next speaker is iPhone. Please go ahead and accept the mute and also state your name for the record.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city staff. My name is Joaquin Jimenez, and today I'm speaking about Measure A. So I'm very concerned about our democracy. Sheriff Christina Corpus was elected by the people. She was not appointed by anybody. She was not appointed by the county. She was not appointed by the board supervisors. Measure A is taking away our power to vote, to elect our representatives. Remember, we were given the opportunity. We are given the opportunity March fourth, right? The county spent millions of dollars, millions of dollars of taxpayers' money for this special election. Think about a dictatorship. When you lose the power to vote, when you lose the power to decide who's going to represent you, and this is what's happening. For democracy, it jeopardized. We're getting a taste of what a dictatorship is if we vote yes for Measure A. I urge you to reconsider your vote of no confidence on Sheriff Christina Corpus. My name is Joaquin Jimenez, and I'm voting no on Measure A. I will not give my power to the county supervisors to remove Sheriff Christina Corpus. Today, you have a young lady speaking about learning about government. Think about it. Sheriff Christina Corpus was the first Latina, the first woman of color to be elected for the position of the sheriff of San Mateo County. She is well liked. You saw the election against Carlos Bolaños. Let me give you a little bit of history. Two thousand seven, Operation No House. You remember that one? Two thousand fourteen, a young lady, Yanira Serrano, was killed by a sheriff deputy under Sheriff Monks. Two thousand twenty, Sandra Harmon was killed by a sheriff deputy under Carlos Bolaños. Christina Corpus is bringing innovative ways of working with our community, a new way of policing. She's bringing better services for deputies, better mental support. She is against bringing taser guns and pepper sprays into our jails. She cares about our community. She is a great leader. Her leadership has not been questioned. Her leadership has not been questioned at all. So please vote no on Measure A. Thank you. Joaquin Jimenez from Half Moon Bay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. And that is the end of public communication tonight. And moving on to consent calendar, we have item number five, which is receive and file monthly general fund financial report. Mr. City Manager? Does anybody have any comments or pulling items from the agenda? Sorry. Yeah. Does anybody have any comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion if anyone would like to make one. A motion from Vice Mayor Holliper and a second from Councilmember Nguyen. Your vote, please.
My apologies. The consent calendar is approved by the vote of five to zero.
Thank you so much. And now we're opening up the public hearing on item number six, which is a continuation of an item from previous council meeting, a public hearing to consider the issuance of bonds by California Municipal Finance Authority in support of a qualified residential project at 1301 Broadway.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. This is a continued item from our February 11th meeting. Next slide, please. Following public comments from Carpenters Union Local 217, the item was continued to allow the two parties time to dialogue about their concerns. The bond supports a 97-unit affordable housing project located at 1301 Broadway. It was entitled on August 19th, 2024. The project is identified as a housing opportunity site in our adopted housing element. The State of California awarded the bond allocation on December 11th, 2024, and the project's application was approved by the California Municipal Finance Association, or Finance Authority, I'm sorry. The purpose of this hearing is to inform the public of the CMFA's intent to issue the bonds allocated by the state. Consideration is limited to the council's authorization of the issuance of bonds within its jurisdiction. Conditions of approval may not be imposed on an entitled project through a bond hearing. Next slide, please. The developer has applied to the CMFA, and the state has awarded the issuance of tax-exempt financing in the amount of $85 million. Proceeds of the bonds will be used to finance the acquisition, construction, improvement and equipping of the project. Holding a bond hearing provides members of the community with an opportunity to speak in favor of or against the use of tax-exempt bonds for the financing of the project within the jurisdiction of Millbrae. The debt to be issued by the CMFA is the sole responsibility of the borrower. There is no obligation or responsibility to the city with regards to repayment. The city bears no cost in the issuance of the debt, nor does it have any bearing on the city's debt limit or credit rating. CMFA will share 25% of the issuance fee with the city, estimated about $20,000 for reimbursement of the city's costs. And then just an update on what happened since the last council meeting. Following that meeting, the applicant and Carpenters Local Union 217 had the opportunity to dialogue last week on opportunities to work together in the future. This evening, we're joined by Anthony Stubbs, the bond attorney representing the CMFA. We're also here joined by Gene Broussard of AMG Associates. They're available to answer questions as well.
Thank you so much, Director. Anyone on this council have any questions or comment for the staff before I open up for public comment? Seeing none, at this time I'd like to take some public comment, and then we can bring it back to the council and perhaps the applicant. We'll start with Nels Delanda, followed by Anthony Carroll.
Good evening, Mayor, city council and city staff. My name is Nels Delanda. I'm a representative of Carpenters Local 217 of San Mateo County, which covers the City of Millbrae. I'm also a former resident of Millbrae. We're here tonight to ask you not to approve the bonds for 1301 Broadway until we have some meaningful dialogue with AMG Associates. It's crucial to continue the conversation with them to help them understand this project deserves to have protection for workers. Too often, we see workers being exploited on projects, and this project should not fall in that category. It is important to have responsible contractors who pay area standard wages for the hard work they put in. They deserve to be paid a living wage that helps them take care of themselves and their families. By utilizing contractors that provide health care, you're not only helping the workers get them the care they need, but you're also helping taxpayer dollars. That is a public benefit in itself. I would also like to see this project use apprentices apprentices that are trained in state-accredited apprenticeships, having workers who have been in apprenticeships maximize the safety of the workers on the job, knowing that they have been properly trained to do the job at hand. Ensuring labor standards is not only beneficial for workers, but also for the entire community. When workers are paid fair wages and have access to health care, they are most likely to spend their earnings locally, which boosts the local economy. Additionally, well-trained and fairly-treated workers contribute to a higher-quality construction, which benefits everyone by using the buildings and infrastructure for our community. We would like to see the developer take our conversation seriously because these bonds are supposed to have public benefits. Just not affordable housing is just not enough. How is it affordable when the workers who will be building this project won't be able to afford to live there? Please postpone these approvals to a later meeting. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Slender? Anthony Carroll, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Council members, thank you for your time tonight. My name is Anthony Carroll. I'm also speaking on behalf of Carpenters Local 217. You know, our members care deeply about housing, and not just when we get to build it. We care about housing because, just like everyone else, we feel the pain of the housing crisis and the cost of living escalation over the last decades in this area. At the state and local level, we have advocated for policies and individual projects that make it easier to build housing because we understand the need for more housing. But what we also care about, though, is ensuring that building more affordable housing does not perpetuate the need for subsidized affordable housing. What I mean by that is, in general, the state of non-union residential construction wages is quite bleak, actually. Construction worker families are 30% more likely to be below the poverty threshold, 100% more likely to be uninsured, and 100% more likely to have more than one-hour commute because they cannot live in the communities that they work in. 1301, excuse me, 1301 Broadway, obviously a significant project. 97 units of 100% affordable housing is nothing to sneeze at, and we understand that. But we are concerned that for a project with $85 million in bond issuance up for approval tonight, that the lack of labor standards on this project will invite the possibility of labor exploitation, low wages and other negative externalities to filter in through this project. That is why we are asking you to issue another continuance on this vote. Please allow us, the developer and members of the council, more time to engage in good faith on this project to ensure strong labor standards, health care, local hire guarantees, the type of public benefits that don't just go towards the developer themselves. Thank you for your time and thank you for your concern on this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. At this time, if I can invite the applicant to the podium, representatives from the applicant. Do you have any response to some of the comments from the public?
Yes. Hi. Good evening, council and council members and mayor and council members. My name is Gene Broussard. I'm with AMG and Associates. Yeah, I'd just like to kind of answer some of the dialogue and the public comment that we received and kind of give an update as well. So two weeks ago, I was here before you, and you asked us to have some dialogue. Our principal, Alexis Gavorgan, reached out to Nels, and I believe that they had a conference call with Douglas and Harvey, and there were some emails going back and forth between the parties. The dialogue was happening, and currently, right now, our understanding is that Harvey and Douglas are requesting to have a meeting with some higher-ups. That's the current status as of today. You asked us to reach out to the unions, which we did, and that dialogue is continuing. To say, as far as like the health care, excuse me, as far as the health care and all the other comments that we received, as I stated before, on a lot of our projects, we have other sources of soft funding or other wage requirements on a lot of the projects that we do. And this project is not one of them. We didn't ask for any city funds other than the undergrounding requirements, and this is just not one of those projects. As I mentioned before, excuse me, as I mentioned before, we are we're under a tight timeline to get this project funded. There's a lot of extremely low-income families that need this project. It's 96 affordable units. There's one manager's unit here. I don't think I mentioned before that 20 of the units are for extremely low income, which is the 30% income level of these projects, which means that for a three-bedroom unit, the projected rent will be $1,300, and a two-bedroom unit will be $1,100. So we're talking about extremely low-income housing here for people that need it. As you know, it's extremely difficult to get this project out of the ground. We have the bonds awarded to us, and there are a lot of laws that protect this project. We went to, in front of this, and we went to a hearing in August last year to actually have the project approved. This is the first time we've heard from the unions. We have reached out to the unions. We did not hear from the unions in August. We are having a dialogue with the unions. It's true, we've reached out to them. I'm sincerely saying that we, our principal, reached out to, like I said, Douglas and Harvey, and we are working on it. Where that goes from here, we don't know, but we are making a good-faith effort to reach out to the unions and do it. As far as, again, the health care, it's hard because we don't have other sources of soft funds. There's no wage requirements on this project. But like I said, there are other projects that we work with the unions and we hire union labor.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Sure. I think if I'm, well, anyone else on the council have any questions for the applicant comments? Councilmember Rinaldi?
Thank you, Mayor Fung. I have a quick question for you, Gene. When is the exact deadline that you need those bonds to proceed by?
My understanding is it's in actually April or May. I think, I believe it's the end of April or May that the bonds have to be issued. But there's a procedure, I believe, right after the TEFRA, then there's obviously a whole financing transaction to close. They're privately placed, just like a mortgage.
And how long does that process take once you get the bonds to complete? And does that have a deadline by April and May as well, too?
I'm going to have Anthony Stubbs from CMFA answer that question. He might have a little bit better answer than I.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a state deadline in July. And if those bonds are not used by then, then it goes away. In order to meet that deadline, bonds have to be issued, or, sorry. Closing calls, all the parties involved in the financing have to be underway right now. A lender's not going to move forward without a TEFRA agreement. So the longer this gets delayed, the harder it is to get an actual bond purchaser for, for the allocation of the bonds. And just, just as a reminder, so this is a very, very competitive process to get these bonds. Hundreds and hundreds of projects are applying each round with the state. The state has approved this project for allocation out of hundreds of projects around the state. There's no, there's no reason that the state has seen that this project shouldn't be approved. Union labor is not one of those. It's not contingent upon labor union. And TEFRA, as was mentioned by your city staff, TEFRA is to approve the tax-exempt bonds issued by the CMFA. TEFRA is not to approve the project. It's not to say that you are for or against the project. It's to approve the tax-exempt financing for the project and the CMFA be the issuer of those bonds. These are two separate issues. Labor union has nothing to do with TEFRA or the tax-exempt. I don't know why this is even picking up issue. You may want to talk to your city attorney and see if there will be any legal issues if, if this were denied because of something unrelated to TEFRA. Available for any questions?
Yeah, I would like a direct timeline of exactly what goals you need to achieve with those bonds, from date of us issuing acceptance to what your next steps are, so I have a clear understanding. Because right now, it's still vague.
Yes, council member, let me just clarify. Anthony had said July. That is, there's a tax credit allocation which we had received. So we received bonds and we received tax credits. There is a deadline at the end of May. It's 180 days from, I believe it's December 10th. Whatever that date is, is the deadline in which we must close on the tax credits and the bonds. They're paired together. The deadline that he's referencing is a bond deadline, but we also have a deadline to close the entire transaction. I believe it's the end of May. If you, whatever, I think December 10th plus the 180 days, the actual deadline to do it. And once the TEFRA is granted, then there's a closing process and further underwriting with the construction lenders and banks involved in the transaction, and obviously the equity that purchases the tax credits. I hope that clarifies.
How long does that closing process take on average?
The closing process has already started. Where the banks are engaged, they've started to do all the underwriting, the environmental, the developer underwriting, the balance sheets, the deal, the cost projections, everything like that. So it's already underway right now. But as it nears the deadline, the work obviously increases, and there's more questions that come up. But it is underway currently.
Further questions?
Mayor, if I may, is the official statement prepared? The OS for the bond issue, is that prepared yet? This is a private purchase.
Okay.
So there's no official statement? And there is a commitment from the purchaser? Like I said, without the TEFRA approval, that lender could walk away. I mean, obviously, if bonds aren't, if they don't see that the bonds are moving forward, they're not going to pay in the project.
So it sounds like there's already a buyer for the bond lined up?
Correct. I believe it's Wells Fargo, the construction and Citibank on the firm.
Okay. So the buyer sort of bonds lined up. Financing is ready to go. It's pretty dialed in at this, it sounds like pretty dialed in at this time.
Pretty dialed in at this time. So it'd be a shame to.
Okay. So, Gene, if you don't mind. You know, based on our last conversation from about a little more than two weeks ago, we were hopeful that we're going to have some productive discussion among, you know, the carpenters' unions as well as the developer in trying to make sure that, you know, the entire community gets to benefit from these public financing and those who built San Mateo County get to live in San Mateo County and for a fair wages. So, and I think those are some of the, you know, encouragement that we have as part of, you know, giving you the ample time to have those discussions. And I think, you know, leading up to tonight's discussion, we're still hopeful. Sounds like what you said a moment ago, that more conversation will need to take place or likely to take place in the days ahead. How optimistic are you in terms of, you know, these conversations moving forward here is going to be constructive, fruitful and be productive?
Yeah, I think the conversations are going to continue. As far as, like I mentioned before, there is, there is a different, we only have a certain amount of budget for this project. The budget was submitted for application in August of last year. Like, there is not a plentiful amount of soft funds on this project. Like, there is not a plentiful amount of soft funds on this project to pay for everything, right? And so we've been working, our principal has been working with the unions and even offered kind of, we, like I said in the last meeting, we go out to bid, for example, framing, we go out to bid for framing, and a lot of different subcontractors will bid on that. Our principal said, hey, we'll even let you have a look at the plans beforehand and have an advanced look at this during the bidding process. So I'm hopeful, but it's hard to say where we stand in two weeks. We might be in the same place, in all honesty. So we're having the discussions, we're having the dialogue that the council requested of us, but it's hard. Like we said, there are consequences for us as a company not to proceed with this project. It's if we don't perform and close on this project, it's detrimental. There's there's negative consequences for us in the tax credit community, the affordable housing community. I think there's even negative points assessed against the development of this project. But the the credits are issued, the bonds are ready to go, and we have a project in a very competitive landscape for affordable housing.
Yeah, and I think we all understand how important affordable housing is to all of us, especially in this mid peninsula area where homes are affordable affordable homes are are hard to come by, right? We want everyone to succeed in this process. So, but you know, my question to you a moment ago, it's the same question that I'm hoping to get an answer to, that how optimistic are you in the next couple of weeks to have a productive discussion with some of our representatives to come to some win-win situation here? Do you think that's likely and be fruitful to give it a try?
I think it's, I think we're optimistic that something like that can happen.
Okay, good. That's that's what I'm hoping to hear from you. What do you say? A couple of weeks? Do you think that's enough time to bring some good news back for all of us?
I think so, yes.
Okay, if that's the case, does anybody have a, any questions or comment from anyone else on this council? Councilmember Rinaldi?
Thank you. I'd like to motion to postpone this for two weeks to give them the opportunity to have some meaningful fruitful dialogue and come to a consensus between the two parties.
How about a date certain? Next council meeting?
Yep, that works for me.
Next council meeting. City manager, what day would that be?
Mr. Mayor, that would be March eleventh, so the motion, because then we would not have to renotice.
To a date certain.
Should include the date certain, correct.
Okay, is that amenable to the developer?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just to comment on that, you know, thank you for your willingness to work through these issues. I know maybe, I think we're hopeful. Obviously, we can't guarantee that there will be an agreement here, but we'd like to see this project really be a win-win for the community, something that everyone can be proud of. It sounds like, from what I heard, members of the carpenters' union aren't even asking it for it necessarily to be a union project. It's some fairly, you know, minor, well, relatively minor commitments, I think, that they're looking for. But something tangible that I think that hopefully can be brought back to us to show agreement on on this. So I would say, you know, I wish you well in terms of being able to make those arrangements. I'd say both to you and to the carpenters, don't wait to pick up the phone, you know. I don't want to hear, oh, the ball is in their court, from from either of you at the next next meeting. So don't be scared to be the first one to make the call either way. And, you know, I wish you well. We certainly want this project to be a success here. So thank you.
Thank you for the comments.
Okay, so, okay, we have a second from Councilmember Riley. Any further comments? Your vote, please. Oh, go ahead. Councilmember.
Just a comment, not a question, but, you know, so we don't repeat what we've seen today, where we're hearing some kind of dialogue, but wasn't clear what that dialogue was. I would like to see more effort on both sides to make an agreement somewhere, because time is of the essence. And the more we delay, the less time we have for the affordable housing.
Thank you. Okay, no further comment. Your votes, please. All good? City clerk.
Item number six is continued to March eleventh, twenty twenty five. The motion carried by five to zero.
Thank you so very much. Moving on to item number seven, which is existing business and to review and approval of the Millbrae parking management plan. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce our Director of Engineering and Public Works, Mr. Sam Batista, for the initial presentation.
Director Batista.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Councilmembers. The item before you is to adopt the Millbrae parking management plan. The plan has been in the making for over a year and a half, and tonight we have Frederick Venter and Brian Cowell of Kimley Horn, who was, who is the city's parking consultant. They conducted the data research, the public outreach, and analyzed the data to prepare this report. So with, without further ado, Frederick will present the report to you and our audience.
Thank you, Sam. Mayor, council members, it's a privilege for us to present this very unfold parking management plan and a lot of action, a lot of decisions being made. So there's some really great recommendations and considerations we're gonna put forward to you. Next slide, please. So why do we do parking management plans, right? Number one is specifically for Millbrae, is what we call right size parking, right? There's always this fine line between, do we have the correct number of spaces? Are people driving around too much looking for a space? Versus, you know, how do we manage it and get best options for our community and help them find parking? And then the second thing is parking is very expensive, right? So there's an opportunity to generate a revenue stream for the city in this parking management plan. So the study area was really the commercial core along Al Camino Real and some residential areas, and the residential areas were included because of the parking permit program. And then we include public spaces on street and and then off-street lots that's owned by the city. No private lots were included because the city has no jurisdiction over those, and also those lots have specific zoning code requirements. The spaces are allocated to each of those businesses. Next slide, please. And this slide just shows the 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 city lots in the sort of the peach color. And then the bar parking structure is paid not owned by the city, so that was not included, and also not the Caltrain lot. And then the two parking lots for Millbrae Square was also not included in this. Next slide, please. So you have a couple of existing parking regulations, and those are evident by the signs that are posted on the street. You have one to two hour, our most common time restrictions, and it really has to do with, number one is that's how long it typically can take for somebody to do some business in downtown, come for a meal at night, maybe some coffee in the morning, and there's some twenty minute parking locations in downtown as well. The reason for the parking permits are that, you know, if the parking falls up in downtown, people will spill over and park in the neighborhood. So, and we don't want that. So there's also these two hour parking limits in the neighborhoods. And then if I'm a resident, I would like to be able to park more than two hours in front of my house. So you get a sticker that you then put in your car, and then if parking enforcement goes by, they can see that you can actually park in front of your house longer than the two hours time limit. And it's very important to have these because we will always see parking intrusion into neighborhoods, and the residents really get upset about that. In the city, parking enforcement is done by county staff. And some of the outreach we did slowed that there was, showed that there was a desire for more frequent enforcement, your people staying too long in the space. Next slide, please. So you have basically every option of on-street parking configurations in the downtown, lots of diagonal parking. Down Al Camino Real, you have a couple of frontage streets, very tight parking, both parallel and perpendicular. And then in the residential streets, you primarily have just the normal parking, the or parking adjacent to the street. Right, please. So when we do parking collection, data collection, we focus on two things. Number one is how many parking spaces do you have, right? And then we look at how many parking spaces are occupied, and we look specifically for peak periods, right? Because that's when, you know, you get your, either you're frustrated or you're very happy customers. And then when we go for a parking management plan, it becomes really important to also look at duration. So how long are people staying? Because you then determine on, determine on, determine parking time limits, and also for the financial aspects of it, you can determine income. And then with the duration, you also look at how many times a parking space can turn over, right? So if you have ten spaces and every hour there's a car coming in, you can get ten times their fees, right? The parking fees in the day if that parking space turns over ten times. The data we collected for the occupancy was on a typical weekday, so it was a Thursday, and we also did a Saturday. We, so what we do when we collect the data, we drive around, so it's a shoulder, we call the windscreen survey. We also did the license plate sweeps to look at occupancy and look at duration, right? Next slide, please. From the data that we collected, it was really a focus on hotspots is what we call it. Where do we see locations along the city streets and the lots where there's actually not enough parking spaces? If you probably go drive there right now, you're gonna have to drive around the block or stand somewhere and wait for a parking space to open up. So we typically say that eighty-five percent means that the parking lots are full. Now, you can ask why eighty-five percent, because evidence shows that over eighty-five percent people have to start circulating around to find a parking space. So for this study, we said, let's go for seventy-five percent, right? It means that there's a little bit of a buffer, comfortable finding parking space. So we've used seventy-five percent as the determining if the parking spaces were full or at capacity. And then out of the eight observations, so that was the full eight hours, right? We also counted how many times the occupancy was over seventy-five percent. That the data is gonna be reflected over a couple of the next slides. Next slide, please. So this map is a color map. It's got the heat code on it. The darker the color, right, the higher the occupancy and the demand, right? So you can see the red means that there were eight observations, so it's almost for the full day, right? The dark red with the exceeded capacity for the demand on the street. You can also see that, of course, on Broadway and a little bit in downtown. So the downtown core is really the some of the residential streets even is where the highest demand is indicated. Next slide, please. Highest turnover was also in downtown, so it showed, you know, again, the dark red on Broadway, right? Has more than seven cars per day, so every, about every hour, a space would turn over. Right, please? So this is a very interesting graphic. From the duration, we saw that about twenty percent of vehicles park more than two hours. About eighty percent of them park less than two hours. It's also an important feature when you start looking at the financial planning and the financial model to estimate what the income could be from parking space allocation. Right, please? So the summary of the existing conditions, data collection, shows that the greatest parking demand is definitely in the downtown core area. And we, a lot of the spaces in downtown are closed or at capacity. And then, of course, the busiest time is around six P M. in the evenings, when I think everybody goes home or are home, and they wanna go grab a bite. There's a lot of restaurants in the downtown. Then, of course, a weekend morning. We know Saturdays typically people start going from about ten o'clock to two o'clock, and also your farmer's market occupies, you know, one lot, and of course, we displace the parking there, and that's on a typical Saturday. Happen. Next slide, please. So there was a little bit of outreach and community engagement conducted as part of this. Online survey was done before any outreach was done. There was also outreach to the businesses in downtown. Then after some of the information was shared with the public, there was a public meeting held and some live polling conducted to get an idea of of what people were thinking about parking and how easy it is to find parking and look at a couple of options for future parking supply in the city. We also interviewed three neighboring cities to get a little bit of best management practices, City of South San Francisco, Mateo, and San Bruno. Here's some of the results, the discussions with them. Please. And this just shows the online survey, open between July first and twenty-third in twenty twenty-three. The objectives were just to gather public perceptions. Like I said, no information was shared with them. It's just a perception on the current parking situation in in downtown and in the city's core. Then there were some questions asked about support for some paid parking in downtown. We received two hundred and twenty-seven responses. The majority of those came from residents, visitors, and there were also some businesses that replied. Next slide, please. So interesting, the online survey results showed that little more than half the people said, I always find parking. Thirty percent though said, I usually find parking, right? That's probably now we're getting into the peak capacity, and the other fourteen percent that I really find parking, I guarantee you they are the six o'clock visitors. Then, of course, this is the million dollar question, right? Would you be willing to pay for parking? I always tell the story, you know, we we will pay five or six bucks for a latte, but we will not pay twenty-five cents to park in Starbucks to go pick that latte up. So sixty-one percent of the residences voted no, are not prepared to pay for parking. Next slide, please. So then a public meeting was held in June twenty-four, after we did the data collection, shared some information. It was hosted virtually and also in person. And the topics that were discussed is the findings of the survey of of our data collection, and we started communicating about parking management recommendations and how paid parking could work and what the benefits of it was. Then we collected some feedback via polling at that meeting. There were about ten in-person attendees and fifteen people attended online. Please. So in in this recommendation, people said, hey, can you typically find parking? And there was a yes and a no, so the no actually went up a little bit from the previous survey. Note, there's a little bit of a shift here of you, oh, sorry, not a shift, but people were asked, do you support building a new parking structure, right? There was a over sixty percent no. And do you support paying for parking? So it shifted from a no to a yes. I think as soon as the public were informed about, hey, what can we do to make parking better? The businesses were informed, right? There was this understanding of, hey, we can maybe do something to improve parking conditions. And then, of course, how much are you willing to pay for parking? So people will always, by default, select the lowest value. That's just how it works. But the the values in here are very real, and they also, you know, the dollar amount you see here are also what your neighbors charge, right? So people are used to this kind of fee per hour or around there. Note, the, it's like sort of a, not exponential function, but the the graphic goes as very heavily rendered towards the lowest number. But what it shows is people are prepared to pay, right? That's the principle that came out of this. Nobody said, I don't wanna pay. That's also a step in the right direction for managing parking and moving towards a paid parking program. So we also talked to the businesses, and it was findings were presented to the Economic Vitality Advisory Committee. And the the findings and from that meeting was there's general support for paid parking for downtown. I think, remember, businesses look for feet, right? The more feet they have for their business, the better their turnover will be, the better business will be. Revenue should benefit downtown improvement projects directly, so that's the latest movement that we see. We're gonna talk a little bit about that. Instead of parking income going to a general fund, it goes to the parking in downtown. Whether you put better signage, better landscaping, wider sidewalks, create that fund that really benefits the businesses in downtown and the community can see where their money is being sent, is being spent. We spoke about the hourly parking rates need to be, and that is comparable to the neighboring cities. You know, if you charge more than your neighbors, what's gonna happen? People are gonna say, oh, I'm gonna shop in San Bruno. Their parking is cheaper than here, so you have to be competitive in whatever rate you set. And then, of course, the sustainability of any parking program becomes important, right? If it collapses, you know, everything closes down, and then the parking program will die. So I'm gonna share with you the interviews from the three cities we spoke to. So South San Francisco, they have about a thousand parking spaces. The the rates vary between a dollar twenty-five and a dollar fifty per hour with a two-hour limit, and they do Monday through Saturday. Saturday. They have the oldest equipment, so they have quite a few old-school parking meters that you just feed with a coin, and they have shifted quite some of their parking to the mobile, Park Mobile app, where you use your cellphone to pay for parking. Their police department does all the enforcement. Their revenue goes into the city's general fund, so basically, if it goes into a general fund, city council is the option of where they spend that money. City of San Mateo, about three thousand parking spaces, also around a dollar fifty an hour with a two-hour limit. They also only collect funds Monday through Saturday. They have a mix of parking meters, so still the old school that you feed with, you know, with a coin, and pay stations as well with Park Mobile. And their parking enforcement is outsourced, but is managed by the police department. S P Plus is an enforcement company, well-known for to do a lot of parking management programs, and L A Z Parking is another, does that. Their revenue also goes into the general fund. So San Bruno is the newest city to implement, you know, paid parking. They have about eight hundred and forty meters parking spaces, also around a dollar fifty, but they brought it down to seventy-five cents for twenty minutes. I think that need that we saw, even in your data, that there's quite a number of people that park, you know, between zero and one hour, right, is servicing here in San Bruno. They collect money seven days a week, not just six days. They have pay stations, so more, and I will share some pictures with you, more advanced pay stations, also mobile apps. Then the technology here is a pay-byplate. So what that does is, if you enter data, you put in your license plate. And then as enforcement happens, so the firm or the police department or that drives around with a meter and they have a camera and they look up the license plates and the software in the payment system, and that software in the car immediately can detect whether you have paid for parking or not, and if you haven't, then a citation can be issued. So it's pretty seamless, pretty easy. That's the way I think a lot of parking in the future will work and continue to work. And their revenue goes into a downtown enterprise fund, it gets spent on downtown projects, which I think is pretty awesome. That's, that's also how you get benefit to the businesses and you get business by it. So summary for the neighboring cities is, you know, establishes a parking enterprise fund to use for the downtown improvement projects. You know, we still gotta continue to expand that permit program, which, with enforcement during the parking rollout, paid parking rollout period. Consider extending enforcement hours, so maybe go until eight P M. on Sundays. Some cities use contracted enforcement and can also handle some maintenance and meter revenue processing. So these firms offer up operations and maintenance of the equipment and the software. The short-time periods are desired by the public, but transaction fees usually run around seventy-five cents already per transaction, so, you know, if you're gonna charge people seventy-five cents to park for twenty or thirty minutes and you pay all of that away, you basically generate no income. There's a little bit of a balance there. Cashless payments ranges from sixty to ninety percent of all transactions. The whole parking industry is moving away from coins, you know, into a cashless payment system, but it's not totally eliminated, right? So you come some pictures later where you do offer options, and I think it's still a great way to go. You know, it's just more difficult to collect cash, right? Expensive as well, you need two people, it's labor-intensive, security, all those kind of things. Next slide. So here's a couple of solutions that we are recommending and that we want you to consider is, you know, evaluate and adjust current parking regulations, right? So that would be the first step that you have to do. Need to change your zoning ordinance to allow for paid parking, how it works, what's gonna work, what about enforcement, so that's step number one. Don't believe you have any motorcycle parking. Maybe we can allocate a few spaces for motorcycles. Pickup and drop-off zones, as we continue to use Uber and Lyft, you know, especially with, I think, the senior community, they don't use it all the time, but there is a need for pickup and drop-offs. Definitely dedicated parking enforcement, it becomes extremely important for a successful program to be, to be, to have enforcement. And then I spoke about the license plate reader, right? That will make the successful enforcement a lot easier. Valet parking is a more recent phenomenon that we see, especially with a little bit on upmarket restaurants, and also if there's not parking close by, that's a nice way for businesses to say, can I have two or three spaces in front of my restaurant? People can come valet and they can park somewhere, and you can allocate spaces, put them in a parking structure or even in the street or a lot, and they can pay for those parking spaces. Lots of options on valet parking, too. You definitely wanna brand it, right? If people and if the community comes to downtown, hey, I'm in downtown, this is what all the parking signs look like. You may have a little bit of a color scheme, that the identity of downtown is being acknowledged. It may get to a point where you want to share some of the parking lots, even on the private side, with the public, so there could be shared parking agreements as you extend this out into the future. What we see from the data is that Broadway, you know, has very high demand. I think you already have a shortfall of parking supply. I think there is, and then, you know, my understanding is from the downtown plan that you want to extend your sidewalks a little bit and maybe change some of the parking from diagonal to be parallel to the curbs, so you'll have a lot of parking spaces. So you are really at a point where you need to consider a parking structure, right? Those are expensive, but I don't think you have lots, surface lots anymore where you can just park, it's now time to perhaps go vertical. You know, parking spaces cost now between forty-five and fifty-five thousand dollars a space to do structure, right? It's not cheap. If people do park a little further away, you can consider a shuttle service and perhaps an annual parking permit for seniors, right? So you do want to protect the community, honorable communities to be able to get them, they are people that need to park closer to where they wanna be, and you have options of those permits for them. Next slide. So the two impactful solutions are, like I said, build more parking, but that's not gonna happen overnight, right? But you can start planning for those. But the implementation of the paid parking is an easier one, right? And it's quickly implementable, you can manage the demand quite well and start generating income for the city. You know, that's, I think that's a very important item. The benefits of paid parking is, on the short term, you increase parking availability for residents and visitors by increasing turnover, right? People will not park just because they can, right? If they pay for parking, you have a better use of that actual parking space and increasing the turnover. For the longer term, it creates revenue stream for other initiatives, right? And improvements within downtown. You still have staff that needs to come and work in these parking spaces, they're gonna need to park for six or eight hours, right? Probably potential still for them to pay for parking. Next slide, please. Lots of information in this table, but I just wanted to share with you, you can see that the dollar fifty, right, is about the going rate for a lot of agencies around here. Like I said, to stay competitive with your neighbors, right? That dollar fifty is a good rate to go with. So the parking considerations in front of you tonight is to, you know, we're gonna, we have some options here for about a thousand hourly parking spaces, a dollar fifty per hour for up to two hours. There can be fifty-nine long-term parking spaces, based on some of the survey, with a cost of five fifty a day. That's equivalent to the Caltrain parking rates, so you also gotta remember, if you're gonna make it cheaper, right, then the Caltrain people will come park in your spaces, right? You don't want, you don't want to create competition with any of the parking lots around you. Then we do recommend that you consider a short-term parking rate of seventy-five cents for thirty minutes, right? The seventy-five cents will at least pay the fee, and, you know, those visitors, many members that do wanna park for a short time, right, they can actually do that. We also do recommend a pay-byplate system. And you can see this example is a system where you can enter onto the keyboard your license plate data and then use a credit card to pay, or you can actually put in coins and cash, so buy the dollar. They're fairly new, and they work really, really well. San Francisco implemented a bunch of these fairly recently. Right? The other option is Park Mobile, so I'm pretty sure you've seen these. This is more using your mobile app, and it's a really easy one to do. You know, once you've entered the data and you've got the app on your phone, basically park, scan the code, and whoops, it's there, right? And the software gets really cool, because nowadays you will get a warning, right, on your phone if you're gonna exceed your time limit. You'll get a quick S M S, a text that tells you, hey, you gotta move your car or go. You can even sit on your phone and increase your payment of the parking that you need to pay. You recommend enforcement with the license plate readers. Um, so the parking system vendors, right, and the picture on the right-hand side is actually in, in San Francisco, and you can see, you know, there's actually just the kiosks there, but also a sign that you elevate, so if people park in a block, they can see where the actual kiosk is and don't need to look for it. There's a lot of competition on the sidewalks, right? There's trees, artwork, people, so it's important to have the signage as well. So we recommend that you do the stations with signage. We recommend that you put in stations that can accept cash card and contactless payment. And, you know, these can operate with solar power, for nighttime, they will run with a battery, wireless connection capabilities, you know, and they can have off-site monitoring, like I said, so, you know, if they're broken and you have an operations and maintenance agreement with the vendor, they can come fix them. But they're really cool and they really work very nice. And then we spoke about O and M, if you wanna fish that out to vendors and have them do it, instead of burdening staff with operating and maintaining the equipment. Right? So a couple of pictures here for recent deployments. San Bruno has their option, and you can see their keypad. You take coins in the white, one on the right, San Francisco, and it's the picture we just showed you, exactly the same keypad, cash, credit card, so all options available. Right? So the big question is, well, where do we put those kiosks, right? So typically, about three hundred feet is the maximum density that we would, especially where you have high turnover, people don't wanna walk a block to go find a parking station, station to pay for the parking. Some of these locations are just showing graphically, but three hundred feet is about the going rate, tracing them on blocks. So we prepared a financial model to look at the potential revenue from the paid parking. It shows an income of about one point one million in net income per year, and, you know, so going up to twenty-three, four, we go to about eight million dollars in income. The initial layout is, so you'll see that twenty-two-five, the negative amount is for installation of the equipment and purchasing it. Then from twenty-six onwards, it's just an annual collection. The amount goes down because it's in twenty-two-five dollars, so we did not escalate, you know, the amount every year to affect that year's dollar. So how do we mitigate the potential impacts of paid parking? So, you know, as usual, there will be, we live in a democratic society, so there will be a lot of people that don't like it and there will be a lot of people that like it, right? So you gotta soften the blow, you know, if you, to the community, if you install this, conduct outreach about paid parking prior to starting the program. And you only issue warnings in the rollout period, right? People can get used to it. No citations in the first month or so. And have a one-month grace for enforcement, right? About the actual enforcement. The great thing about paid parking is that it can support Community Benefits District to fund the area improvements that is being planned in the downtown. That was also a big attraction for the businesses in downtown. And then we do recommend expanding the residential parking permit program to prevent spillover effects, like I mentioned. And then determine the demand for employee permits so that they can park all day, right, and not get in trouble or need to move their car every four hours or two hours. We gotta consider loading zones for commercial vehicles. And of course, there will be annual monitoring of parking data, adjust the program, right? Incredible, San Francisco did quite a bit of research in sensitivity of the cost per hour. You actually find sort of a sweet spot, so if the price gets expensive, you see less people park, right? If the price gets too cheap, more people park, so where's that sweet spot so you can manage that right-sized parking and still make the maximum dollar amount of paid parking? We've mentioned about the increase in parking supply, that's, I think, is gonna happen, so, you know, we have three potential parking structure locations identified, and, you know, you're looking for that footprint that can accommodate the parking structure, there's like an ideal footprint where you get the most parking spaces out of the module, within the length of that area that you have. These are the two thirty-eight Broadway, the farmer's market, four forty-six Broadway, and three hundred McNola Avenue. I think you could explore public-private partnerships to construct these, manage them, and operate them. I think we also recommend working with the Chamber of Commerce to relocate the farmer's market to free up parking space during the weekends as a near-term solution as well. Right? So the recommendation summary for us is, you know, create this parking permit program within the downtown. The hourly rate, about a dollar fifty per hour, seventy-five cents for thirty minutes. Pay-byplate system and parking pay stations, they will accept both cash and mobile payments, good option to go with. Use the revenue to contribute to the community benefits of your downtown, and that paid parking could also increase parking space turnover, so that can happen and increase also the funding that you raise. Expand the parking permit program into the neighborhoods, do the enhancement, oh, sorry, enhance parking enforcement with the license plates. Right? So the big question is, how quickly can we do this, right? So the creation of the ordinances, like I think I said, that should be done first, right? So probably three months to get that written up and bring it to council, there has to be two readings on it, if you have a ordinance, it's gonna be like a zoning code change, then you will, in that meantime, you will do a parking design, right? We can share with the vendors, the vendors will then come back, and you bid on your infrastructure and operation and building the infrastructure. That's probably about nine months out, then the one-month rollout, rollout with warnings only and no citations. Looking at about a year, twelve months, right, to have it up and running.
Thanks, Frederick. So tonight's council recommendation is to adopt the parking management plan and also to direct staff to implement the following recommendations: to immediately pursue amendments to our municipal code, design the system for preparation and release of the R F P, and then work with the Chamber of Commerce to relocate the farmer's market, and then prepare an R F P for a qualified parking consultant to analyze the farmer's market parking lot for the feasibility of a potential parking structure, mixed-use development. So with that, that concludes the presentation, we will be happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Director. That's a very thorough presentation, and lots of work has gone in. In fact, this is something, you know, years coming, but we're finally here, which is, which is great. Now, I'd like to first open up to the council for questions and comment for the staff and our consultant, and then we'll go to public comment and we'll bring it back for further deliberation. Anyone? Councilmember, when?
Just more on experience for transitioning from a free system to like one where we're paying. Could you share some examples of success stories and why, how they manage that transition?
I think the, the success story is about engagement, right, of the community and the I think the, the success story is about engagement, right, of the community and the businesses, right? And you've started that, right, continue to do that. Um, you know, there is gonna be, it's always, think about that first two weeks when school opens up. It's chaos with traffic, right? Everybody's trying to find their way, you know, and everybody complains and let's fix the school and we need more parking and, you know, but after that, everything settles down, right? And then the traffic sort of sorts itself out. You know, my wife always said, my son, I'm gonna pick you up twenty minutes after the bell. So the same thing is gonna happen here with parking, right? There's gonna be a lot of teething problems in the beginning. But I think that soft period in the beginning where you have a month of implementation, and if it's not working fine, you can extend that. Just stay flexible, right? The biggest thing is you wanna be in a, in a position where the community, the community's questions can be answered. Eventually, you know, implemented. Paid, paid parking is not, not uncommon. It's a very, it's, it's, uh, we live in an area where good luck finding.
Were there situations where there were unanticipated challenges during transition and maybe you can share some of that experience if there are?
I think the, the biggest thing is definitely the enforcement. People will show up, right, and they don't have cash, right? Or their phone doesn't work, or, um, right, but people gotta get used to that, right? I, I know in my car, I have always quartered, right? So when I go and my, I've just put parking wheel on my phone, right? So I took a little bit of time in the beginning, but right now I can go anywhere and I can park right up. That's, that's probably the biggest teething problem. It's just people not being ready for that implementation of paying for a parking space.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember, Renali?
Uh, yeah, just wanted to get clarification from the city manager that tonight's motion, and this is for the general public's knowledge, that tonight's motion is just to accept the report. It's not that we're moving to a paid parking system or anything of that nature. It's merely informational that we're accepting this report with information regarding paid parking recommendations.
Well, it's a little bit more than that, council member, um, with the recommendation. So it's, it's to adopt the parking management program that was presented and then direct staff to move forward with the implementation and, and on the board there. So immediately pursue amendments to the municipal code. We need to detail every block, every street with the time limit parking and the amount of parking and, and, and other legal processes to comply with the, um, state laws and vehicle code. And then move forward with designing the system and we'll be bringing this back to the city council, you know, as, as we progress. What type of system would best meet our needs? So cost benefit, obviously technology, reliability, the, the, um, assurance from the company, you know, has the company been in business for a long time, you know, can we research their products, et cetera? And then, um, obviously work at the Chamber of Commerce for the relocation of Farmers Market. As the presentation and the survey and work indicated, between ten and one o'clock on Saturdays is the peak time for downtown. I was just down there this past Saturday. I could not find a parking space. People were parking in the red, people were parking illegally, so, you know, that's indicative of, of the problem that we do have. And then, uh, the preparation of the request for proposal for the parking consultant to analyze the feasibility of a parking garage. Not just the parking, but also as identified, the opportunities for a mixed-use project with a public-private partnership with a development company to develop the parking and perhaps develop housing or another commercial, um, type of project that, that would be feasible there. So it is adopting this, but also directing us to continue to pursue the work. You know, with a, with a high priority, um, with the rollout of the, of the comprehensive parking management plan as presented.
Thank you, City Manager Williams. So just to be crystal clear, because there's been quite a bit of misinformation around this, uh, this agenda item, which I understand both sides of the equation for paid parking. Who wouldn't want something when it's free? But there's also the convenience of when it's paid for, there's gonna be more spots that are available. So just to be crystal clear, no vendor's been, no, this is for public knowledge, because everyone knows the answer. But no vendor has been selected yet because an RFP has not gone out for a competitive bid.
Good, that, that is correct. No, and so again, this, this will evolve. So the first step is, do agree with the parking management program and then as we roll out the implementation, we will have public hearings we'll be bringing in front of the, uh, city council. So there'll be other decision points, um, that the city council will have to make in terms of, okay, these are the areas for metered parking. This is the type of technology meter that we're rolling out. That decision will be made by the city council, um, in the future, probably, you know, based on the timeline, uh, we anticipate somewhere midsummer. So the decision is not, you know, when we, i- if the council adopts this plan, we are not going to move forward and install parking meters tomorrow or, or immediately. There, there's another hearing and process that we will go through, uh, for that decision.
Thank you, City Manager Williams. I'd like to give the opportunity to the council members to ask their questions, but I have a couple more, so I'll yield back for right now.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Riley, and then we'll come to the Vice Mayor after.
Thank you so much, Sam and your team. Hard work, give us great hacking management plan. I think this gonna be benefit our local business owners and our generation to come. We can use this fund to build the garage we always wanted. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor?
Yes, thank you for the report. I have a few questions and also comments. One question I had was about the study that you did in terms of, uh, going out and determining which areas are more heavily utilized and others. And, um, I think my concern is that that, it sounds like that was only done over two days. There was one weekday and one weekend. Do you think that's sufficient sample size to make the, and that was also nearly two years ago that that was done, so, I think the questions are, do you think that's a sufficient sample size? And then also is it, do you think it's relevant today?
It's a great question. We get asked that a lot. So, um, luckily we count so many cars and parking spaces and we, there's so much research and papers and thick binders floating around, right? That, um, in the industry, collecting data has been sort of settled on if you take an average day and you collect that data, right? It would be representative of a, wouldn't collect information on a rain day, you wouldn't collect data on, you know, a special day if something happens. So if you're gonna do that every week throughout the year, right, you're gonna probably get the average that's gonna be within ten percent of the data that you collect. Um, a good question is, is twenty-three and today the same? It becomes a little harder because, you know, businesses probably had a little bit of turnover. You know, I think the economies have maybe changed a little bit from twenty-three to twenty-five, but has it changed that much? Right? What we do know is you have a shortfall of parking spaces, right? I don't think that factor has changed. You know, if you're gonna count tomorrow, you, you're probably gonna have same conclusions that we have in the study.
Yeah, I mean, I think anecdotally it seems pretty accurate in terms of, you know, the area around Broadway seems to be the most, you know, busiest, uh, most crowded parking area, whereas some areas along the El Camino, particularly further north, like towards where the El Rancho Inn or the La Quinta Inn, tend to be a little bit less, um, tend to be more open. So I think it's generally pretty accurate. And then I think one question about, um, you had a sort of a net revenue of roughly one million per year. What is sort of the enforcement, and I assume that's net of enforcement costs? What type of, what do you have modeled as, as that enforcement costs? Like, you know, how many staff, how many hours per day?
Um, so in this projection, we did not include enforcement revenue into this because we don't know what, what enforcement is gonna look like. It could be contracted out, it could be by city staff. So because there's some uncertainty, it could go to like PD, uh, the PD could be collecting that. We don't really know at this point, so we didn't include that. Into here, the projections are more meant for be, for kind of the revenue that would go into that parking enterprise fund for those downtown improvement.
Okay, so the net would likely be less than if it doesn't account for enforcement?
Uh, more. Um, so this projection, the, the, uh, the graph does not include parking citation revenue.
Uh, sorry, I meant more like the cost of hiring meter attendants and, and paying for them. The cost of the enforcement? The cost of the enforcement, yeah.
There's usually, um, you, the cost for operating a citation system is usually covered by the citations themselves.
Okay.
It's very seldom that we see, I don't think I've ever seen that, that the cost for operating the system is more than what you're getting from tickets, right, some writing citations, unless you have almost no tickets that you're writing. We're not very diligent in paying parking fees, so you will always write tickets.
Okay, that's helpful.
And that, and that will stabilize over time too, once, once people start to get tickets and they'll realize that they better feed the meter and not get a ticket, so.
Yeah, and, and I think what you showed about how, you know, the revenue goes down slightly, I think that's probably accurate in that, you know, but if you were to do this survey ten years from now, twenty years from now, people would probably say, I'm not gonna pay more than one dollar per hour for parking, even though that's not gonna be very much money at, at that point in the future. I, I would also suggest, you know, for going forward with this, to make sure we have those short-term parking options. And I think, um, even less than thirty minutes, I think even that is kind of a, a large minimum amount, so even five, ten minutes. And it might be worth looking to see if there are, what types of payment systems are out there that maybe have smaller fees that, um, at least could sort of break even on those, uh, short, um, you know, payment, uh, dollar amounts. And then in terms of the garage, you mentioned the Farmers Market, that's the one that's in the, um, recommended action. Is, is that what you think is the, the strongest potential if there were to be a parking garage? And it seems like it would have to be through a private-public partnership, because I don't think it's gonna, this program doesn't seem as like it's gonna generate the revenue to be able to provide the cash flow for that.
Right, that's, that's a good question, Councilmember. Um, the, that side is, you know, in, in terms of destination, in terms of width, length, um, it's something worth analyzing. So yes, that is our, our priority site at the moment.
All right, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I,
City Manager?
Can we get the bar chart back up? Because this was a question that I received from some members of the public. Um, and I don't want anybody to misinterpret that. The revenue does not go down, so this is the net income from parking meters. And the reason why it goes down over the decade is because a dollar fifty stays consistent. So the operating costs go up, I think you escalate at three percent per year. But the dollar fifty stays the same. So it's not, it's not a decrease in revenue. And I just wanted the public to know that it's net income because the dollar fifty stays flat over the decade. So costs go up, revenue stays flat.
Yeah, and I think one thing that is worth noting, uh, in terms of our future projection, is that as we move forward with parking garages, you know, first one with the Farmers Market and additional one, hopefully, you know, shortly thereafter, the amount of parking inventory will go up. And as the parking inventory goes up, this figure will continue to trend upward. And I think that's something we, you know, wanted to be able to produce sufficient parking with the anticipation of our growth, uh, in downtown as we continue to focus on our economic resilience. Broadway, El Camino Real, you know, we already begin discussing density bonus where we can bring in more, um, residential's opportunities on downtown, uh, and it also come with, um, greater and better opportunity for our commercial storefront on Broadway and El Camino as well. So, you know, the, um, the increase in parking demand will be necessary. And by growing that inventory, um, these trend lines will, you know, will go north rather than going south. I just want a public to understand that.
Yeah, Mayor, if, if I may also add on to that, I think it's important for the public to know with housing laws, and we do have a certified housing element, um, that we need to produce, where the goal is to produce thirty-two hundred housing units between now and twenty thirty-three. Because of our location to a transit corridor and state law, that housing, parking is not required. So many developers are, are coming to the planning department, you know, as they're looking at feasibility, uh, to develop projects. We cannot mandate parking because state law says we cannot mandate parking. So to your point, these parking garages in the future, as we accommodate that growth with the anticipation of no parking or limited parking, these, uh, public-private ventures for parking garages is, is absolutely going to be our future. And so I just, you know, to piggyback on what you said and for the general knowledge of the public to realize that that's what's coming down the road. And, and you as a council can't control that because that's state law. But we can accommodate it and be forward-thinking, um, as we grow and redevelop to, to, you know, have that vision crystal ball to accommodate that.
Right, and, and to that point, coming from the background where my day job is, as in real estate development, even though the state law does not require real estate of, uh, residential development to provide parking, given the fact that we're within half a mile of major transit, um, some might actually opt to provide a certain amount of parking for the convenience of, um, some of the residents. So these parking garages, um, provide an opportunity that if you do not build onsite parking, which we wanna discourage, these parking garages can serve as residential garage, uh, residential parking for some of the future development, which, uh, would also enhance revenue opportunities, uh, of our parking authorities, right? So I think that's something we need to, um, also consider, uh, as a key part of our future strategy, as we continue to look forward to the growth in our downtown.
And, and Frederick, your experience, I mean, for, for decades, urbanized areas have been very successful with shared parking.
Yes.
And so that's, that's something that the public parking garage is in partnership with businesses, um, you know, and, and residential developers. We can certainly do the shared parking, uh, agreements or development.
So I have a few things I would come back.
It, it, it's a fine balance, right?
Yes.
Remember, that developer is not gonna lease out an apartment or sell a unit without the parking space, right? Or they wanna give the purchaser or the tenant the option to lease a parking space. So, you know, we will disassemble the parking from the lease agreement, but hey, I have a car, right? I still, even though I may take Caltrain, people still have a car, they wanna travel over the weekend, right? So there will be parking demand, even if there's no parking supplied, uh, you know, on a, on a specific.
I mean, we wanna, we wanna take the cars off the road, we wanna minimize the amount of use of private vehicles, but, you know, there's this always gonna be, you know, a process to which, uh, we get to the goal of everybody taking public transit and using bike as a last mile transportation. So, but, but I guess to, as far as tonight goes, I just want the public and also the council to understand that we're here to set in the direction to hopefully move forward with adopting a parking management plan so that all these fine details about, you know, how much per, per hour, how many spaces and, and which, creating different parking zone, for example, at different, uh, parking rates. I mean, those things will likely to come back to this council for, for the discussions and decisions. There'll be many more decision points, uh, from this onward. You know, the maps, the enforcement mechanism and appeal process, we touched on that a moment ago. And, and all those details will have to probably come back. But, you know, we're here to sort of adopt a framework at which moving forward in a, in a direction. And then, you know, I think in terms of, you know, I, I heard a moment ago, um, you said the cost of, um, using, say, for example, cred, you know, the, the apps, the, the parking apps ties a credit card to it, right? And then you set the transactional fee at seventy-five cents roughly?
That's right. About seventy-five cents per transactions with a credit card company.
Yeah, we gotta get a, a little bit more of, um, you know, better economy of scale here, hopefully. If that's a possibility, I think this is something that, um, and I'm gonna say i- i- it needs to be a little bit more, um, cost-effective if possible.
So, of course, it's got the economy of scale. I know Park Mobile pays in LA only forty-five cents, but, you know, they collect hundred and forty-eight million in parking, general monies a year, right? So yes, there's definitely an option and that's gonna be part of your document in your negotiation with vendors.
Yeah, because, you know, I understand how important it is, for example, if you walk into a grocery store and buying, you know, a dozen of eggs, you know, i- i- and then it make you pay an hour or even half an hour would be a little bit overbearing. So, you know, having somewhat of a more, uh, finer granular, um, you know, maybe a ten-minute interval, something to that effect, and analyze certainly the cost benefit, uh, given the cost of transaction, this is something I would challenge. this is something I would challenge the staff and our consultant to find a creative solution to that. I think we touched on that a moment ago, Vice Mayor. But I think there's, you know, based on some of the lessons learned previously in some of the neighboring city, I think this is a valuable consideration to have upfront, knowing that this would be a bit of a challenge. You know, and since this topic has been for a while, there's been a lot of discussions about how to find way to, you know, have an employee parking program somewhat, and I think we can find some, perhaps as an idea, you know, some low-impact street with more surplus parking opportunities to potentially inventory some of these parking spaces where we can create more cost-effective tiers of parking zone. So that those who come to work in Millbrae perhaps can park in some of these areas that has plenty of parking and it would not affect residential parking, so that they can come to work and pay somewhat of a more cost-effective tier and be able to stay for eight hours, six hours, you know, depending on what the shifts, you know, hours are like. So, I think that's something I would encourage our staff and our consultant to look into. We discussed a little bit about yellow zone destination, I think this is something that we can consider, especially in some of the areas where delivery is, is important, is part of their day-to-day business operation, that's going to be important. I don't know if Six Wheeler is going to be important, I know San Francisco has that, but you can, I guess we can, I think, these things are going to evolve over time, depending on the needs, based on the experience as we've rode out. But have that as part of your consideration moving forward as well, because I know on Broadway during the early morning hours, there's a lot of trucks delivering, so that's going to be important. And you mentioned a moment ago in some of the slides, some of the revenue is going to go into, which bucket is it going to go into, community benefit?
Enterprise fund, the downtown enterprise fund.
Enterprise fund. I was under the impression that it would go into the general funds, am I not correct there, City Manager?
Well, it can't, Mayor, and that's a decision point of the City Council in terms of the policy when we bring back the ordinances.
Yeah.
But we're recommending, you know, that it stays within the downtown for continued improvements, parking improvements.
So, I think it might be, yeah, it might be more flexible to go into the general funds and then have a yearly appropriations going into different buckets, depending on what the needs are, because I'm sure the needs changes over time as we progress with our downtown changes. So, you know, my recommendation would be to go to general funds and then have a yearly review to have it appropriated into different buckets based on needs. And then another thing is, as we look forward to, you know, increasing our parking inventory with garages and so on and so forth, perhaps we need to, you know, reexamine the current on-street parking strategy and whether or not somebody's angle parking poses a certain amount of safety concern in the past, where I know the planning commissioner Wall almost got hit in front of Wells Fargo when someone mistaken the gas pedal with a brake. Had it not been the pillars, he may not be here with us. So, you know, this is something we need to examine closely as we continue to increase inventories on those parking. And my understanding is, so long as, you know, folks can get to park and then be able to walk within five, 10 minutes to the destination where they wanted to shop and patronize, they should be okay. So, so we need to reexamine the on-street parking strategy in the near future, but to that point, coupled with the need of us being an age-friendly city, we need to perhaps, if we're pushing all the parking into garages, we need to look at prioritizing some of the seniors in ADA parking, you know, on Broadway and El Camino Real, so to make it easier for some of the folks who can benefit from mobility assistance. So, you know, I would challenge the staff and a consultant to look in light of some of those community-based needs and find creative solutions to that. Okay, so Vice Mayor, you have something in addition, and then we can bring it to the public.
Yeah, sorry, just a couple more points. I remember several years ago, it came to our attention that the block of Broadway along, where next to the Millbrae Square development is not owned by the city, the city has an easement on that block, and if that's correct, would we still be able to put parking meters there or?
That's correct, Vice Mayor. We looked at the record of survey, and along Broadway, there is a public right-of-way easement, and we took some measurements of the road and the sidewalk, and all those improvements are within that, that public, public right-of-way easement.
Okay.
We maintain.
Okay, and I think also related to that, you know, I think, you know, Millbrae Square does have a large parking lot downtown, usually has a fair amount of space available, and so one concern I have is if we do put parking meters along Broadway, that may push some of the parking into that lot, which is free. So, I don't know if you've had any discussions with Millbrae Square ownership about this, and also if there potentially could be some type of creative solutions where that lot is perhaps monetized in a way that benefits both the property owner and the city. Oh, okay, it looks like we have representatives here from Millbrae Square, but thank you.
Councilmember Ronaldi.
Thanks, Mayor Fong. I'd like to echo all the comments that we've heard from council so far. One thing that I'm looking at right now that I had a question for K and H, looking at Table 12 within your presentation, we could see what the cost for operating expense is from year 2019 all the way to 2022, and I want to call out for the public's knowledge that in year 2022, it looks like we redid our contract with the sheriffs, and we jumped from about an average of about $55,000 a year, got to remember the pandemic was around there, too. So, looking at the average of about $55,000 a year, what we were paying in operating expense, we jumped all the way up to $90,000 a year. So, being that we live in one of the, well, the technology hub of the world, have you seen operating expenses go down with any newer technologies or any different types of strategies that would help us save on those operating expenses if we were to implement a paid parking program? I mean, I see that we have automatic license plate readers in here, technology's always evolving, so.
No, we have not seen that technology made it cheaper, but it makes it easier and better to enforce and better to manage, right? It's definitely cheaper than a coin collection system where you go and you go from meter to meter and take the cash out and get it into a box and you have people doing it. Definitely a lot cheaper. But the, the technology, you know, it's like the iPhone never gets cheaper, right? Always gets more expensive, so that's, I think it's the same principle, but there's more intelligence built into what you, what you can get, right? Like I said, a vendor would be able to see which pay station has a problem and it's not working properly without having to wait for a call to sit in a hall and say, hey, I feel this, this pay station is not working. That, it's more the ease of managing the system that comes with smart technology, that's the biggest benefit. Of course, the optimizing the space use, there's lots of other technologies getting easier and better to manage.
Thank you, and I'll close out my comments, just echoing Vice Mayor Holibur's comments about looking into the potential for private-public relationships with these parking garages, because the numbers are pretty eye-opening, and obviously the revenue we would get from the meters here wouldn't be covering that anytime soon.
Okay, at this point, I'd like to open to public comment. Oh, City Manager.
I was just going to say, Mr. Mayor, also, just to remind the council that we applied for and received a $300,000 grant from MTC for technical assistance, that as if the council adopts this and provides a direction this evening, those proceeds from that grant, that $300,000.
Can be activated?
Will go to fund these additional studies as we bring it back to the council. So, just to remind the council, and so the public knows, that technical grant of $300,000 will be spent on this. Okay?
Just a real quick question to City Manager, will any of those funds, if we were to technically move ahead, come to consensus and move ahead with a program? Would any of those funds from MTC cover the initial startup cost of a program?
Not the initial startup cost, but all of the soft cost for the analysis, for, you know, research of the equipment, the RFPs for the equipment, ordinance preparation, so all the soft costs associated with it. Now, if there's any leftover, I do believe we could use that for capital, but I don't anticipate any balance in that revenue once we do all of the soft cost-type studies.
Last question, you know, I've said that quite a bit tonight. Regarding the funds, the funding source, where the initial startup would cost, initial startup cost would come from, I believe the estimate they give is, in the table, K and H says it's about $850,000. And my apologies if this has already been covered, but maybe glazed over this, but is this coming out of our general fund, the $850,000?
Yeah, no, that's right, that would be coming out of our, our general fund revenue, and that's that year one, that, that loss, and then we would recoup and recover that cost to pay back the general fund through the parking meter revenue over time.
Thank you, City Manager Williams, I'll be back.
Okay, all right, sounds good. We'll start with in-chamber speaker, and then we'll move on to online speaker after. We have five, and we have 10, so we have 10 speakers tonight on this item. I know this is an important item, I want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak, and I appreciate everybody waited a long time and have much to say. So, I'll try to do the three-minute for everyone, but I like to ask everybody to be as efficient as possible, because 10 speakers on three minutes means 30 minutes. So, we'll start with Kathleen Garen, followed by Vicky Imbimbo.
Good evening, my name is Kathleen Garen. I'm a 30-year resident of Millbrae. I'm also the Chair of the Economic Development Advisory Committee, known as EDAC. However, the opinions are not of EDAC, these are my opinions tonight. And so, the question I have is, will paid parking really help Millbrae downtown? I have reviewed the 88-page presentation, it's quite lengthy, and just like to start with the objective that was put out and why there was a plan. It was basically to create a revenue stream. So, if it's to create a revenue stream, then you have to expect, they have to create a stream, so thus we have paid parking, not necessarily out of need, but out of creating a revenue stream. And then if we look at recommendations from the consultant, and, oh, I have a packet, I don't know if everybody, you all did get the packet, and I have the supporting data, all the data I have is actually from the consultant presentation. And basically, that one of the, the recommendations was, we need policy modifications, we need parking enforcement, and that we don't have a parking problem right now, where they foresee is a parking in future growth, not current growth. So, then I want to take a look at my conclusions, and this is again based on consultant data. Millbrae does not have a parking problem. 70 to 83% of respondents from the community outreach that was done said they have no problem finding parking downtown within five minutes. Millbrae residents do not support paid parking, and there were two different community outreach, one was 227 respondents, one had 15. So, you can't really wait the results of one versus the other in the same way. And again, based on consulting data, that we are well below optimal parking capacity of 75 to 85% occupancy. Now, talking about future growth, so that was the one thing that the consultant said, we need to look into that. They're estimating 1.3% growth, which is pretty low, and in addition, they're saying that we don't really see a high demand for downtown parking spaces because of all the different transportation options that we have here in Millbrae. And then, and we covered a lot of this, too, that we talked about that in terms of will Millbrae make money. So, we're going to lose almost $1 million the first year, then we're looking at about $1 million net revenue. But I also would like to point out, these are projections, and we don't know how accurate these projections are because they are only projections. I would like to know if someone has checked with San Bruno, have we talked to them about their revenue, has it met their expectations? And let's study what they've done, because we know that it has not worked well for them, and it's not considered a success what it is that they have done. And also, has anyone spoken to the, the city managers of the cities that don't have paid parking?
Thank you for your comment tonight, and then we do have your report, and we will go over that, thank you so much.
I missed my very last statement, if you can take a look.
Thank you. Ms. Vicky Imbimbo. Followed by Ken Smith.
Hi, my name is Vicky Imbimbo, I'm here on behalf of Millbrae Square Shopping Center. We are adamantly opposed to this paid parking plan in our area. I don't think we have the right to speak on behalf of the downtown, but, you know, I listened to the gentleman talk about his outreach, no one ever talked to us about this. And then you, you used 227 people for one poll, and you used 25 for another. How is that an outreach? I think you failed at that point. Sorry, so, anyway, this proposal is going to burden our lots. Our parking lots run adjacent to the Broadway and El Camino proposed paid parking. Not sure who thought that would be a good idea, the reality is simple, when given the choice between paying for parking or using a free lot, people will choose free every time. That means customers, employees, and visitors from business up and down Broadway will start using our already congested parking lots, leaving Millbrae Square's businesses, employees, and most importantly, our customers struggling to find spaces as non-patrons take up the parking. So, patrons from 24-Hour Fitness, that whole, the whole complex, not just 24-Hour Fitness, increasingly use our north-end lots. The patrons of the post office, Leonardo's Deli, Bank of the Orient, will further congest the free parking next to Starbucks, which will negatively affect our business on the south end of our shopping center. This, sorry, so, the city has already allowed multiple businesses to open in the area without requiring them to add additional parking of their own. As a result, our lots continually get abused, forcing us to police spaces meant for our customers. We incur those costs, which we then have to pass on to our tenants. So, the burden of all this parking is on our tenants. I'm not exactly sure how that is fair, you know, we have such a problem with the new building going up, that's another burden on us. So, I'm going to make it short, I truly hope you listen to our concerns when you consider this, this prospect. I would just assume that you keep us out of this paid parking, I just think, I don't know about the downtown, but for us, it makes no sense for people to park on Broadway when they can walk two steps over and park into our free parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Imbimbo. Ken Smith. Followed by Vernon Bruce.
I want to thank the councils and the mayor for all your hard work you do and the city staff. You guys do a great job keeping our city running smooth as possible. Yes, this is going to be a lot of, of residents' concerns, for sure, and I've talked to quite a few residents about this, and, and business owners, actually. And I'm going to address the business owners' concerns that I have talked to. Employee parking, it really is a big issue where employees and businesses, and they just don't want employees parking anywhere near their, their customers' parking area. I mean, how many people here have worked in San Francisco, the hassle trying to find parking? You walk, or you take a bus, or whatever the case may be. So, I don't have a lot of sympathy for the employees of the businesses down here that they have to park right next to their, their shop. I heard, and you guys did over here, you did a beautiful job, you addressed a lot of concerns, and the council members addressed a lot of concerns that are floating out here already. But, yeah, I think I, I addressed the onion story, I don't know, maybe six, seven, eight months ago, but in San Bruno, someone went to buy an onion, and that 25-cent onion cost them two bucks. You know, so, that's a problem. So, for your half hour, it's no, it's no. I want to go get my dry cleaning, I'm going to be there in and out in five minutes or less, and it's going to be my luck that I didn't pay and I get a ticket, right? Because I just ran in and out for five minutes, so that's a no. I mean, you're going to have to, like Mayor Anders said, you're going to have to figure I mean, you're going to have to, like Mayor Anders said, you're going to have to figure it out. You're going to have to get the cost down. It's not reasonable. Pay stations, we have a lot of seniors. Those pay stations have to be close. You know, the old legacy coin operated ones, there was one right in front of every single car, right? And so that made it easy for, for people to do it. But we have, I don't know, forty percent of our residents or seniors that come and, you know, they don't want, you know, they have mobility problems. Thank you, Mayor Anders for bringing that up. So these pay stations, they have to be easy to use, and they have to be really close, as many as possible that we can put in, period. I'm not saying I'm against this program. I'm just saying we got to really figure out some things before we implement. Parklets. Got to get them out of here. Um, I'm going to burn last paper, uh, last paper, I'm sorry, last council meeting. Vern brought up a very good point, and I didn't really think about it, but you know, these restaurants have doubled their seats, and they don't have, you know, taking spots away. Anyway, I still had more to say, but.
Send it to us, Ken.
Huh?
Send it to us. Thank you, Ken. All right, Vernon Bruce. Followed by George Lynch.
Here not too long ago. Mayor Fang and fellow council members, thank you for your time. I want to thank you for the effort you put into this program. As you know, I am somewhat concerned about parking. Anyway, but I do have some issues that I have a lot of concern about. First of all, on page six, the thirteen lesser report, I guess, it's the final report of this parking management. Uh, it clearly shows that they took samples at ten o'clock, two o'clock, six o'clock, and eight o'clock. I've been telling my customers for decades to come down to our shop between nine and ten-thirty, because parking is great there. Studying it at ten o'clock is useless. For the purpose of this survey, absolutely useless. We go to two o'clock. Well, failing the morning, if customers have to come in the afternoon, which we generally don't recommend, we tell them between two and three-thirty. Again, for decades, we've been doing that, but of course, it's been much worse in the last decade. And by the way, I started working in that block when I was eighteen, and I am no longer eighteen. So I have a lot of experience with parking in that area. Nineteen and a half. Anyway. So anyway, so two o'clock is virtually useless also. Probably just as busy as they probably accurately got the parking situation for the evening would be the very middle of the day, the work, middle of the working day for all the rest of the businesses here. Not only the restaurants, but us, the rest of us. That would be, of course, between ten and two. So anyway. That's that. So also, there was reference, I'm a member of the EVAC committee. I'm not going to speak for the EVAC committee, as our chair did not either. But just to make a long story short. During my tenure on the committee, we did not vote on or approve anything regarding this. We got it presented to us last year. We were not allowed to take it home with us. We had to give it back for some reason. First, I really had a chance to study it. It was a few days ago when I downloaded it off. It was website. So anyway, but we did not, and again, unless I missed some meeting and then didn't read the minutes of the meeting I missed, we did not actually endorse it in any way, shape, or form that I know of. So anyway. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Vernon. George Lynch. George Lynch. Final call? Okay, all right, we'll come back to you if you're still available. City Clerk, would you start calling those who are online?
The first speaker online is Karen Lobo. Please go, Lobo, excuse me. Please accept the mute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council for this opportunity. I am opposed to this project the way that it was presented today. I have experience in the city that I work in using the Park Mobile app. It's not reliable. On several occasions, I've received tickets when I had paid through the app. That required me to take time off of work to contest the parking ticket. It's not as seamless or as easy as the presenter suggested. The, the app has problems. The city enforcement and the app management point fingers at each other as to who is responsible for the errors in giving the ticket. So I think that needs to be looked at. We have a very large senior population. They are not tech savvy, and having this app would be problematic for them. And I, I agree with previous speakers. I'd like to know how much money has been generated for neighboring cities? And what has been the impact on the businesses in those locations? I think parking meters create a financial barrier for customers, discouraging them from shopping locally. And instead of paying for parking, many customers will choose to visit other stores where there's free parking. The added cost of parking could drive away both casual shoppers and regular patrons, leading to declining sales and tax revenue. And paid parking disproportionately affects lower income residents who may rely on shopping districts for affordable goods and services. For them, even a small parking fee adds unnecessary burden. And I, you know, I just really ask that you reconsider this and thoughtfully take the feedback that the previous speakers brought to your attention. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Wayne Lee. Please accept the, a mute.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Fang and City Council members. I, if I had to pay fifty cents to park or twenty-five cents to park ten minutes, I'm fine with that because I'm not going to drive, I'm not going to drive five miles out of my way and spend another half hour just to go somewhere to save twenty-five cents. So anyway, so I just want to thank staff for working on this project, because this, they've been working on this project for quite a while. I understand there was a lot of other things that prevented them from bringing this forward. But studies have shown that parking, paid parking has increased revenues in downtown and also improved downtowns. There's been studies after studies that show that because people feel they have to spend, they spend a quarter or twenty-five cents downtown, they feel they have to buy something to make it worthwhile. So I think that it's, this is not a revenue scheme as far as the city's concerned. So I understand it is to try to turn over parking and also revitalize downtown because God know, we really need the, we really need to lower our tax burdens to the property owners because the, the, most of our money, almost of the budget for the city is from the property taxes, and we really need to increase our revenues from the downtown. I can say that what we could do for Millbury is also take advantage of some of the techno, the existing technology nowadays. The city Tacoma is doing that. They're using AI and smart parking. And British Columbia University is also using that to, to charge gig, gig deliveries and ride shares. And that's something that's, that the, the Community College of San Mateo is also looking into. It's charging the, the deliveries, the, the ride shares and the autonomous vehicles. They should pay for usage of public lands. And also, they also blocked the, they should be required to park and not block streets to drop off people too. So that's also a possible, also an opportunity to collect revenues to offset the costs. So I thank you, good staff, again, for your hard work, and thank you, City Council. Good evening.
The next speaker is Ann Snyder. Please accept the mute.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, Ann Snyder, four hundred block of Palm Avenue. While I've got a number of comments, could staff pull up the slide that shows the residential parking boundaries? And I'll keep going on here. In terms of parking meters, I hate meters, but if we have the kiosks, if you are a shorter person like my mom at ninety-seven, she cannot read high enough. And I've heard from our other shorter, sorry to use that term. The existing meters that are out there or paying things are too high up for them to see, especially with the LED readers. I have asked, and I thought I put this in the summary, but there was no mention in the presentation about for a transportation demand management program for all of the businesses. I live right on the edge of this outskirts. There's actually another slide that shows the blue line right on Palm Avenue. And for all of us that live in Lower Highlands, and especially people who live closer than I do, our streets are used as parking all the time. In my case, mainly on special events and constantly for Central Park. So I think Vice Mayor, it would be really terrific if you held a meeting for Lower Highlands and Meadow Glen neighborhoods to talk about the impact on our streets and some alternatives. I understand the need for the money to improve downtown, and I look forward to the BID finally getting passed. However, these streets are impacted by downtown, and some of those dollars could be spent for improving the sidewalks instead of making the residents pay for them, could be used for the trees. I don't see my timer. So I'm trying to stay within three minutes. Those kinds of things. The neighborhood should also be included in those. I think some of the other concerns, someone mentioned, or staff or the presenter mentioned a shuttle. If we had a program, say with Millbury Square, for the employees and an employee parking lot that has cameras to protect their cars and their belongings, that shuttle could take employees to their storefronts when it's bad weather or any time of the year. The, the mayor brought up a point that you could start practicing right now. The Millbury lumberyard is sitting vacant. The owner had wanted to put in a car, temporary car parking lot. You could try with that area right now for employee parking and see how much parking that opens up on Broadway and the residents on Magnolia, La Cruz, et cetera, on that. Again, I don't know where my time is. I, I really think the other problem that you've got in terms of delivery is the trucks that simply stop in the middle of the street. On my street, and contrary to the consultants saying that it's always confusing when school goes in, the traffic on my street is bad all year round. And when Amazon and UPS parks, we can't park in our area. So you need to look at the truck double parkers on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And then additional comment, go ahead and send us, send us an email. Thank you, Ann. City Clerk?
The last speaker that we have is Nathan Chan.
Yes, hi, Nathan Chan here, one five one El Camino. Thanks for the opportunity to address the council on this important matter. We've been talking about this, managing downtown parking for years, talking about managing the parking shortage. And so I think it's important for the council to move forward with the parking management plan as presented. I think that there's a number of good points that have been presented that will allow us to finally be able to manage our parking supply more effectively. I think one of the things, I, I do think it is important for the funds raised by the parking meters to benefit the parking, the, the neighborhood where the parking is being charged for. I do have some concern about whether the community benefit district will move forward based on some of the, you know, past experience where it was rejected, and also some of the recent public comments I've heard about people not being super supportive of it. This would offer us another, another way to raise the necessary money to invest in the downtown and beautify it, and also the surrounding communities. One comment that I heard during the presentation about the farmer's market being moved and in order to free up parking spaces. It seems to me that the reason why there's a shortage of parking has as much to do with the fact that there is a farmer's market there, and people want to park nearby in downtown in order to shop at that farmer's market. And so let's be mindful of where, if the farmer's market is relocated, we're not relocating it to a place where parking is short because then we're just going to create another parking shortage situation in the new destination. In terms of the, the, that lot itself being converted into a larger parking structure, one thing I would mention as someone who lives in that area is that the, I think we'd have to do some serious street redesign in order to account for many more cars moving through that area. There is, you know, there's a one-way street on Victoria right now, and there is supposed to be a dedicated right turn only there, but people flout that all the time, which certainly creates hazards for pedestrians like me who are using that crosswalk routinely. So if we're going to make that more of a destination for more vehicles, let's put some effort into improving circulation there. And then finally, I think one thing that hasn't been mentioned is that city-owned parking lots are often a really good opportunity site for very low-income, affordable housing. And so maybe as we're thinking about what we're doing with our city lots, that's another option that we should be thinking of. And yeah, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nathan. All right. So I think that is the end of public comment on this item.
That's correct, Mayor. There is no other speaker slipper. Hands raised.
Thank you. Closing public comment on this item. Bring it back to the council. Any further comments, suggestions, questions, and discussions? Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I think there were a lot of really great points that were brought up in public comment and as well as through email to the council. So I think at this time, I'm leaning towards maybe making a motion to accept the report, but I think this isn't quite ready for primetime yet, given some of the comments and concerns that we've heard. I think there needs to be perhaps a little bit more outreach that's done, a little bit more analysis in, in terms of the, locations of these pay stations, the pricing, the time limits, all of that, as well as outreach with the business owners and property owners. So that's kind of where my head is at at this point.
Okay, all right. Thank you for your comment, Mr. Vice Mayor. Anyone else? Mr. Vinnoli?
Just want to thank all the members of the public who came forward today to speak about paid parking, whether you objected to it or you approve it. To Councilmember Hollibur's comments, there's a couple of things that I find interesting in the report. The mention of forty-nine kiosks. So for our downtown area of forty-nine, you know, when I first saw that number, it seemed a little obsessive that we would have that many spots for kiosks. So I, I do too agree with you that I don't think we're quite ready for primetime. But I would hope as we go through this process, we're able to flush those details out to really see if this is something that would benefit the community as a whole.
Okay, any other comments?
Sorry, can I just respond to that? I think in terms of the kiosks, you know, there were some comments that they need to be very accessible and very, you know, you don't want people walking long distances. And looking at this map, it looks like several of the blocks only have maybe one kiosk, or perhaps one on either side of the block. So I think if anything, you know, we need to make sure that we have the proper amount of hardware that's installed. Also being mindful of, you know, vandalism, is that an issue with these? You know, the more meters you have, probably the more vandalism you're going to have, and, and those costs are associated with that as well. So I would, I mean, in my opinion, I think this program, if we were to move forward, is more about managing the parking, making the, making sure that the spaces turnover more so than the revenue. I think that's sort of a secondary consideration. So having it as accessible, as customer-friendly as possible, I think should be a priority over, you know, trying to cut costs.
Okay, all right. Thank you for the comment. So I'm going to try to chime in a little bit here. You know, we've, first of all, I wanted to thank all the speaker and the consultant and the staff who've been working on this for years. I mean, this is something, it's been a long time coming. I, I think what we're trying to do here tonight is to set a sort of more of a directional decision rather than trying to have a decisions on, try to make a perfect plan tonight. This, it, it's by far not going to be a perfect plan tonight, because there's, like I said at the beginning, much more discussions and much more decisions to be made ahead of us. at the beginning, much more discussions and much more decisions to be made ahead of us. But I think the greater question in terms of direction here tonight that we need to, we need to sort of come to a conclusion on, uh, is whether or not we should continue to move forward and invest our time and effort into this pay parking program. Um, and in my mind, I think this is something we need to do, um, as we anticipate this city to continue to grow moving forward. You know, we're going to have more residents, we're going to have more businesses, hopefully better and more successful businesses coming in. I mean, we, with the life, new life science, we're going to have thousands of new employees, Amtran, Caltrain coming in, another few hundreds of executive staff. I mean, there are just going to be more and more people, uh, in our city, and we need to better manage, um, our downtown, our traffic, you know, and the use of these vehicles. And we need to make sure that those vehicles that stays in our downtown, Broadway, El Camino Real specifically, uh, we need to make sure they turn over so that it works for the businesses. Right? We heard from the businesses, um, year over year that, you know, parking is a challenge for them. And so these spaces need to turn over in order for those businesses to, to be continued to prosper and to be viable. So I, I think it's the general direction that we need to set here tonight, understanding, you know, the comment from Vice Mayor that, you know, some of these things still need to be hashed out. Uh, but you know, in order for us to be able to hash it out, we need to set the direction tonight to move forward so that we can have greater discussion, so that we can come up with, uh, more creative solutions to some of the things that we heard this evening. Um, and I think, um, as a city, we need to move forward, knowing the fact that this is a growing city, um, and more needs, it's, it's ahead of us. And, um, I mean, changes is hard, I understand, um, but sometimes that's the only constant in the world. Um, so I, I think there is a need for us to move forward. That's kind of where my head is on this. Um, but, you know, as we move forward, you know, we rely heavily on, um, the consultant, but at the same time, just like the input that we, we received tonight, many speakers, they have much more they wanted to say, much more they wanted to provide, much more value they want to provide to this discussion. And we look forward to those because they're going to help continue to shape this, um, in a way that would work for us, you know, for decades to come. Um, City Manager, if I can help, uh, get some background on this, you know, one of the speaker earlier says something about, um, you know, not charging parking as a way to entice folks to come into our town. How many other neighboring city, if any, does not have paid parking program? I mean, it's my understanding that San Bruno has it, South City has it, Burlingame has it, San Mateo has it. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that the neighboring four cities all have paid parking program. Is it not correct?
Correct, Mayor. Yeah, I mean, to that point, in my experience going over 40 years and, and working for the city of San Diego in the downtown and, and, and having a lot of experience with paid parking, um, there's, there's always a perception. Um, and, you know, for example, I, I think one of the statements was that people will choose to visit areas that have free parking. Well, that's not the case for Burlingame Avenue, which is the most popular retail boulevard anywhere in San Mateo County, and they've had paid parking, parking garages. I've also heard from some property owners that have been negotiating leases that, that eventually the business does not enter into the lease agreement because of the parking situation downtown. Um, I think, uh, Councilmember Nguyen asked for some examples. Uh, one of the greatest examples that I'm aware of is in Paso Robles downtown, Paso. Um, it was very controversial when they rolled out parking meters. I think it was a 3-2 vote. The mayor was very adamant about opposing parking meters. He owned a restaurant downtown. After the parking meters were installed, it was so successful in terms of accommodating and, and to the Vice Mayor's point, the parking turnover, um, that he came back and said, hey, I was wrong to oppose this. It was the best decision that was ever made actually for the downtown. So I, I get the issues with parking and, and some of the perception that's there.
Reservations.
But to your point in the council dialogue, you know, the decision is not, you know, it, it's to move forward with this plan, and we will reach out to, you know, Vicky and Bimbo, who, who's a, a great property owner here, and, and we have a very good relationship with her, and, and we'll make sure that we do our best to accommodate. She, she's in a unique situation, the amount of surface parking that she owns and, and that question of, you know, pushing people into her parking lot. Um, I'm, I'm downtown every day, and I can tell you, Millbrae has a parking problem. And, and the, um, the amount of parking in the Bimbos lot, you know, it's filled. There are some areas that the, a lot of people don't, actually, a lot of people think that we own the parking, the surface parking lot across the street of Library Lane. That's privately owned by the Bimbos, and, and that very rarely is that parked. But in the central business district, um, you know, her parking lots are filled. I think paid parking, you know, will turn over the parking. It will allow us to accommodate the growth, um, that we forecast. It's, it's much more than the 1.3% um, that was presented. I mean, you look at our adopted housing element, the amount of housing units that were mandated to, to develop. We have a problem and, and it, and it needs to be addressed, and I think that this is a good launching point, but more to come. And so we will have those discussions and bring this, you know, we live in a process, and this is just the beginning of the process.
I think this is, I, I think we're, we're, we have begun this process quite some time ago, but, you know, I, I think in order for us to get to the point where we can perfect the solution that is needed, we need to continue. We need to continue to invest time and effort, and this is sort of a decision point where, um, do we, do we not believe paid parking, um, is something that will benefit the city in the long run, given the growth trajectory of where we are today and where we will be, say, five, 10 years, 15 years from now. Um, and, and when I look at that question through those lenses under those lights, um, my answer is yes, we do need to move forward. Um, that's kind of where I stand on that issue. Um, and then as we continue to move forward, we will address, you know, many of those issues that has been discussed tonight. Um, and, and more community outreach will need to commit, you know, we need to commence. And, and I will say one more. I mean, even if we come to the point where we have implemented some sort of a parking strategy and ordinance, it will continue to evolve over time, right? As we continue to grow, five years, 10 years, 15, 20 years from now, you know, these things will continue to change. Um, and, you know, Councilmember Rinaldi said a moment ago, how can we use, uh, lower the, the cost of, of, um, operating costs in the future? Maybe at some point there'll be a, an AI robot driving around and, you know, instead of a human being behind, you know, um, a parking enforcement. Um, or maybe even camera would have done it, you know? So there might be other things that technology continue to evolve, uh, that will, um, make it more cost-effective and make it more accurate and, and, um, more easier for us to, um, to implement programs that benefits, you know, our city. So, um, I'm, I'm confident that the only constant is change, and we need to, we need to catch up to that, if not staying ahead of it. So, um, so at this point, I'd like to make a motion to, um, adopt and, um, move forward with this parking management plan, given my recommendation would be to have more community outreach. City manager and also, um, our staff, uh, we need to have a broad-based community outreach to, uh, local businesses, property owners, uh, as well as downtown residents, especially, uh, District Five, District Three, and, um, also District Two, because these are the folks that lives very, very close to the downtown corridor, um, that would be mostly affected by it. So, um, you know, a, a, a robust community outreach program would likely to benefit these conversations. Um, so I think this is something I would like to, um, Sam Batista, I know you're writing it down, but you can review the, the video after this. Um, but, you know, with, working with a consultant, I think this would likely to benefit, um, you know, I'm sure more is going to come up as you talk to the residents and the business owners and the property owners, and we will try to address each and every one of them as we go.
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, and, um, the heat map that's in the, uh, the report, I think, is very valuable, um, because we, we've already had discussions and the analysis to identify areas for on-street parking for employees and, and then a robust residential permit parking program that could be free.
Right.
Um, we charge right now, but through this revenue could be free for the residents. But the heat map, if, if people look at that and look at where the areas, um, where there's, um, um, less demand, that's where we believe we can work with the downtown businesses, um, to push their employees out on the street for street parking, which they would pay, and we can work with the business community.
And I will say.
Opportunities there.
Yeah, and I will say, you know, with that, even that strategy would likely to be somewhat temporarily as we, you know, move forward with parking garages, some of these things will be even more available, I mean, as we increase the parking inventory, uh, we can address those issues as, you know, because we have solutions to them, and we know we do. So.
That's correct, Mayor. And under, um, under the second bullet point, um, design the system, that's also, you know, we would add in, as part of the design is to actually, um, address the issues that came up here and, and then update you with, um, you know, with how we're designing a parking, uh, paid parking program, uh, residential parking program, uh, employee parking program. So that's all going to be part of that design. So, uh, we will, as the city manager did say, we will come back to you and, and, uh, you know, address, um, our residents and businesses' concerns and, um, and, you know, and there'll be dialogue, and we'll get to a point where we can roll this out.
And also.
And that's a grant, Mr. Mayor and Council, that we received.
300,000.
So there's no general fund impact. It's, it's grant-funded. Um, and I, and I think it is important, we've, we've been saying it, but for the community to know that the action, if it's taken this evening, is not the decision to move forward and install parking meters. That will come down at, you know, further down.
More decision come back.
As, as Sam mentioned on that second bullet, so.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I, I, I hope that's correct. I, I think my concern is, I, I think maybe it might be good to, um, clarify the language that you're presenting, because I think as written, you know, immediately pursue amendments, design the system for the RFP, and then prepare an RFP for qualified parking consultant. Those actions do not necessarily take into account additional public outreach and additional analysis, the way that, the way that I read it on, on the staff recommendation.
So we, we can accommodate, I mean, it does include additional analysis and research, but we can also include, um, more community outreach and meetings and.
Can we do that in parallel?
Yes. Yeah, we can, we can add that, Sam, as part of the.
Design, outreach, uh, specification of the system.
Yep.
With, all that would be part of it.
I just want to make sure you.
Yeah, if we have that written into the motion, I think, I would support that.
Yeah. I'll modify the motion to make sure that we include as part of all this, um, amendments and the municipality code and a robust community outreach to the business owners, business community downtown, and also District Five, Three, and Two, which is the downtown corridor.
Except Vicky and Bimbo.
Um, Councilmember Rinaldi.
She leaves.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Fung. Um, being that that's going to happen in parallel, you know, I'm sure there's going to be more details to this parking plan. One thing that I noticed that was missing out of this plan, it showed neighboring cities what hours of operation those meters are charging. However, it didn't have a recommendation for Millbrae, and I, I'm seeing, was it 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM for South San Francisco and 8:00 AM or 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM for San Bruno? But I noticed our neighbors over in Burlingame, they only go till about 6:00 PM. So it'd be helpful if we get that feedback from, you know, the analysis that they're going to do to get a definitive time when they're going to run those meters if they were going to do it. Correct, and that'll be part of that design of the, the system and design of operations. So we will, um, bring that back to you, you for approval.
Okay. Councilmember Nguyen.
Yeah, I think it's important to start the process of understanding that we do need some kind of management of parking because, uh, we are a growing city, rapidly growing one. And what is, I think about is what is the alternative? If we do nothing, we're still growing, and it's just going to further exacerbate the problem. So just sitting, sitting pat doesn't work for me. We have to investigate and look at why, what, what are the feasible ways to help manage our parking and in my, in, in secondary effect is the traffic created from that. So those are things I would support to just at least start this process.
Okay. Any further comments? I just want to fully disclose that, uh, the mayor does not own a restaurant in downtown, so I'm ready to vote. Yeah, okay. All right. All right, we're ready? All right, go ahead. City clerk?
Item number seven, passed by a vote of five to zero with amendment to, uh, include a robust community outreach, local business, property owners, downtown districts two, three, and five residents. The motion carried by five, zero.
Thank you so very much. It's been a long time coming. Thank you for putting it all together. Um, item number eight, informational update on multi-jurisdictional bike sharing program with Spin.
I'd like to introduce our environmental program manager, Ms. Andrea Papajon, for the staff presentation.
Ms. Papajon.
Thank you, City Manager Williams. Mayor Fung, councilmembers Andrea Papajon, City of Millbrae, uh, thank you for the opportunity to give you an informational update on the multi-jurisdictional bike sharing program with our contractor Spin. Next slide, please. So bike sharing are bikes that can be rented. They help people get around without the need to own or bring their own bike. Our joint bike sharing program is with Burlingame, so it's two cities, City of Burlingame and City of Millbrae, and it allows anyone over the age of 18 to download the Spin app on your smartphone and ride a bike, um, and rent a bike, to be clear. So, uh, currently we have 100 bikes deployed between the two cities. It's the winter months, it's been a little rainy, so that's lower than like summer and spring when we have up to 200 bikes available in the two cities. Um, the program was launched in May of 2023. They are type one electric bikes, so they are, um, pedal assist, and they go up to 20 miles per hour. Now, the program, um, is contracted out to Spin. They're an independent contractor. We chose them. They're, they have local expertise because they're headquartered in San Francisco, and they also operate a scooter program in San Francisco. Um, they were contracted to set up, install, maintain, operate, market, um, they're in charge of all the, they're responsible for the, all the liability and insurance, uh, on the whole program. And it is no cost to the cities. The cities pay nothing to Spin for the bike sharing program. Of course, we support them in our marketing, and it's in our best interest because our goal is to increase ridership. So, um, let's see, next slide, please. So why do we have a bike share program? Our climate action plan, which was adopted in October of 2020, calls for, um, to have bikes located at the Millbrae Transit Station downtown and elsewhere in the city. That is measure 28 of our climate action plan. It can be really helpful in solving that last mile, um, issue of getting to and from transit station, and so it can help reduce greenhouse gases. Um, when we were developing the program and the RFP, both Burlingame and Millbrae, um, applied for a grant from the S, um, San Mateo County Transportation Authority, and we were, each city was awarded $200,000 with a 20,000 city match. So we have $440,000, uh, between the two cities to help supplement the program. So we've used some of the funding, for example, um, to add bike racks, you'll notice, um, throughout the cities, and signage, and, uh, more recently, we've been subsidizing the rides. So it's actually only $1 to unlock and ride a bike. This has really helped, um, spur of the usage of the bikes. Another reason that we have a bike share, uh, program is the city's committed to investing in micro, micro mobility. We received a $345,000 grant from NT, um, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission for the Mobility Hub Project by BART, and we anticipate that we will have bike sharing at that hub as well. So, um, just going back to the grant, um, we're really thankful that we received that funding from the TA, and just to date, we have remaining 183,000 left, um, in the grant, so we anticipate it should last at least six months, maybe up to 12 months. last at least six months, maybe up to twelve months, depending how much, uh, how longer we continue to subsidize, subsidize the rides. Okay, next slide, please. So just to, um, look at some of the data, how the program is doing. Uh, we use a dashboard through Populous and on the dashboard, um, I'll just give you some, some data. There have been, since the launch of the program in May of twenty twenty-three, there have been twenty-five thousand five hundred, um, rides. And since January of twenty twenty-four, over the last year, there have been over fifteen thousand rides. So we've seen really an increase in the number of rides over the last year. The average trip is about one point five miles and the average trip, um, duration is about twenty-three and a half minutes. Uh, Spin gives us data on weekly on how many, uh, rides there are. And now during the winter months, we're seeing about four hundred rides a week. Um, and it actually peaked last October. There were six hundred rides in one week. And this program has, uh, basically prevented nineteen hundred and forty kilograms of carbon dioxide emissions. So, um, it really is, it is really, um, serving its intended purpose. Next slide, please. Another, um, um, interesting data to look at is where do people start riding, um, trip origins, and then where do they go to their destinations? And so the most popular trip, um, origins are at Millbrae Bart, uh, Millbrae Bart Caltrain Station. By far, that is just the largest number of place, uh, where the trips start. And the other popular places are the SFO Marriott Waterfront and the Burlingame Caltrain Station. The most popular destinations are the Millbrae Bart Caltrain Station. Again, by far, that's the most popular destination. And then, uh, followed by the SF Marriott Waterfront and then Burlingame Game Point, um, Meta Headquarters. And so again, what this is showing us is that, um, people are using the bikes for that first and last mile to transit. Next slide, please. While the program has experienced high levels of ridership in the past several months, we've also experienced several challenges. Bikes have been left on private property or they blocked the right of way. We've, um, had reports of under eighteen-year-olds riding the bikes and not using helmets. Uh, bikes have been ridden on sidewalks. And, you know, so we, you know, we really know it, know that this is, um, can be very frustrating for our residents. And we are, you know, working with Spin. We meet with them every other week and we address all the issues, um, and are trying to come up with, you know, quick solutions. So Spin claims that they rebalance the bikes daily. I know they attempt to do their best on midday. They don't rebalance every bike, but they, um, do rebalance, which means they'll move the bikes that are in the right of way or, um, address the bikes with low batteries that may be beeping. Obviously, it's in their best interest also swap out those batteries because they want people to, um, rent those bikes. Um, they also review photos that are submitted. When the bikes, um, are, reach their end of ride, you actually submit a photo through the app so they can review those and see if, um, bikes are, uh, parked properly. And if they see repeat violations by the same user, we can prevent them from using a bike. Uh, we've also added geofencing around the Spur Trail and the Millbrae Schools. So geofencing basically, um, at, around the Spur Trail, the bikes are not operable. And we've also did that around the Taylor Middle School and the elementary schools, just to, um, they had some issues with students riding the bikes. And so, um, we, Spin helped us just address that immediately. And they have reported that they have not had any other problems. Uh, we lowered the speed limit on Broadway and, um, we have several corrals throughout the city and we're adding more just to make it convenient for people to park. Okay, next slide, please. So again, the program is at no cost to the city and we're very grateful for the grant we received from the TA because we believe that the subsidized rides has really helped increase the ridership. Uh, we understand that the TA will be having another call for projects in June and we intend to apply for, um, some additional funding. And, yeah, so and then we, at better current funds, we expect to last six to twelve months. And if we didn't get the funding, um, and we weren't able to subsidize the rides, then the, um, costs would just be at their, um, Spin market rate. So it would just be more expensive, but it wouldn't hurt the programness. It wouldn't stop the program. It would just cost more for, um, a user to rent a bike. Okay, next slide, please. So that is, um, the update and thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Pepper John. Um, anyone on the council? Nobody? Okay. Well, the program is very well run. Nobody has any questions. I don't have any speaker slip, uh, on this item either. I don't have any hand raised. Is that correct? Um, city clerk?
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay. All right. Well, um, final opportunities. Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Um, you mentioned that it, it no longer allows riding on the Spur Trail. Is that for all of the Spur Trail or for certain segments? Because it looks like there, I think there are a couple of places either on the Spur Trail or near the Spur Trail where the bikes are docked.
Right. Okay. So, um, I have to maybe get back to you exactly, but, um, what I recall when we launched the program in May of twenty twenty-three, we had some complaints from some, um, people who live by the Spur Trail. And so we geofenced the entire Spur Trail. That was my recollection, but I could go back and double check that for you.
Okay.
Is it something that you?
No, it's, it's just a, a question. I think there's one on Richmond, on, on that entrance to the Spur Trail. I think there's.
That there are some bikes there or?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there is right at the trailhead at, at.
Right. Yep.
Corral.
So I think, I mean, I think one other possibility, like you mentioned, in some places the speeds are reduced. Um, and that could be potentially an alternative to banning it entirely in certain areas.
Exactly. We can limit the speed to ten miles an hour or, you know, instead of twenty, um, and, and also instead of not making the bikes operable. So that would be a good compromise.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is there, um, I suppose you unlock the bike with your phone. There's an app. Um, I'm under the assumption that only riders above eighteen, uh, at least eighteen years old can, um, lease these bikes?
That's correct. That is.
So minor cannot do that.
Some may be using their parents' accounts or, yes, other IDs. I don't know. Um, but, and the reason it has to be, uh, over eighteen is because of helmets. It's state law that you have to, uh, wear a helmet if you're under the age of eighteen. And Spin didn't want to take on the liability to have, um, there's no way to enforce, you know, younger adults, your children riding bikes, um, without helmets.
Yeah, it's, um, you know, obviously, you know, safety is, uh, you know, first and foremost in terms of priority. How do we ensure, uh, uh, I mean, speed is just part of, uh, consideration of safety. Right? Um, so, you know, you know, continue campaign on making sure everybody who uses these bikes, if for good reasons, because they exist for good reason and we supported these bike programs, um, for the very reason why we support them is, is because, you know, part of the climate action plan and reducing vehicle mile travels, um, discouraged use of private vehicles, especially in densely populated areas. There's all the good reasons to use them. Um, but also need to make sure that they're being used in a safe manner. Um, and so to that end, I think, you know, as we continue to implement these programs, um, you know, I, I think it's, uh, it would be important to have some kind of a awareness campaign to make sure that, you know, slow down during intersections, you know, use your helmet to the extent, even though law may not require you, um, as an adult to use helmet. It's never a bad idea to have a helmet when you're riding a bike that couldn't go up to twenty miles an hour. So I, I, I think it's just, um, it's for personal safety as well as those who are on the road.
Agreed. Uh, yes, we are very aware that, you know, we want it to be a safe program. And, you know, if, um, you know, if, if there were issues, you know, it's been like if a bike's in, uh, parked improperly and someone reports that, you know, Spin can identify who used it last and ultimately prevent them from right, um, from borrowing it again.
It's annoying on the phone with a little, it's annoying on the apps. It keep popping up. Where helmet, where helmet, where helmet?
Exactly. Yes. I mean, if we, you know, if the council so desired and, um, you know, or we could talk internally if we wanted to do some enforcement for a short period and, uh, and, and request, you know, from our sheriff's office to maybe, uh, just go out and stop people who are under eighteen riding the bikes or don't have helmets or, you know, are speeding. I mean, we could, or reckless, you know, we could look at enforcing if, uh, the council so desired.
Yeah, I, I think a robust awareness campaign, you know, you know, as we, I'm sure we still have flyers and websites and I'll make sure all the photos with helmets on, even though there might be a senior. I mean, it's just, you know, it's, uh, sometimes it's all about the messaging, uh, and education as well. Um, and hopefully, you know, we can continue to get, uh, do we have any plans, the continuations on, um, the grants, um, moving forward?
Yes. So our, um, we still have about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in our, uh, grant that we are using to subsidize the rides and add more, um, bike racks and corrals. Uh, but we are strongly considering, we would like to apply for the next, um, call for proposals, uh, which is June, I believe, of this year, um, from the TA.
Yeah. Okay. Good. So, um, yeah, thank you for all the updates on this program. Councilmember Ronaldi.
Just a quick comment. First and foremost, thank you to city staff for the excellent presentation. Very informative, excellent. And, uh, just another quick thank you for updating the website. I see you have bullet item number four underneath the Millbrae City website for the Spin Bike Share Program. For the general public's knowledge, um, e-bikes may not be used on sidewalks. Violation of this may result in prohibition of use of Spin e-bikes. So thank you for updating the website. You know, to Mayor Fung's, uh, comment and point, perhaps we do a little bit more communication with the general public to let them know about the program, help offset some of the traffic congestion that we see here with added cars as more people move in with all the development going on. But, uh, thank you for the excellent report.
Yep, you're welcome. And I can go back and work with our public information officer, Ms. Bleeker, uh, to do a campaign on like safety and helmets. And, you know, we can put some marketing out on that. I'm happy to do that, just to remind, you know, remind people to be safe and obey the, obey the laws of the road.
Thank you very much. Any other further? Thank you. Any further comments from anybody? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
I think this is, um, we need to accept, this is an action, so we need to accept the report.
That is correct, Mayor.
Okay. Great. Thank you. We have, uh, Councilmember Ronaldi making a motion and second by Councilmember Nguyen. Ready for your vote?
Item number eight passed by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you, Ms. Pepper John.
Great. Thank you very much.
All right. Okay. Coming down to council comments. I think that's all the agenda for the evening. Uh, who would like to go first? Take a hand raise. Councilmember Nguyen.
So I had an opportunity to attend the CMEC, uh, meeting, committee meeting. So for those who aren't aware, it's the, uh, congestion management, environmental quality. I think I got that right. And essentially, uh, the charter and I, that's the way I believe it is to manage what says congestion. So it's quite eye-opening to see what, uh, what the committee is doing. And this is like a cross coordination between different cities on what we want to do with like, for example, the El Camino Corridor or even like, uh, 101. So all these, uh, connections, like there seems to be like this effort to connect all the pieces and see what we can do on a regional level for managing congestion. So very eye-opening and I, I hope to learn more going forward. That's all I got.
Okay. All right. Who's next?
I'll go next, Mayor. Thank you.
Yeah.
So I had the opportunity to attend, uh, the first bicycle pedestrian advisory committee meeting in Millbrae, uh, last week. We had an excellent meeting, uh, learned about some grant funds for, uh, Safe Routes to School for Green Hills. And there's going to be a meeting coming up on Thursday to review, uh, what the grant is and get an idea of what, what it's going to be used for. So that's going to be great. And there was also Park and Recs Commission meeting. Had an excellent meeting, uh, great committee and commission to, to be on. Lots of talk around pickleball and I'm learning a lot about pickleball lately, which I don't know much, but I'm learning as quickly as possible. There's a high demand for it in Millbrae apparently. So, uh, you know, once and again, another great commission to be a part of. And, uh, just last council comment from me, uh, thank you to the family of Lillies. Uh, being a forty-plus year resident here, you guys have been part of my upbringing, part of my tradition and what, I hate to sound biased, but you guys are always my first pick when I'm looking for Chinese cuisine. So thank you very much and I'm really sorry for your loss. And thank you for joining us today.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ronaldi. Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. And I'll echo those comments as well. Thank you for coming to meeting and appreciate everything that your father and your family have done for our community over, over the decades. Um, let's see, uh, the only, uh, announcement I have is that I attended the, um, Sister Cities Commission meeting yesterday. Um, and there was a discussion of the annual, uh, work plan, um, which I think will be presented at, uh, an upcoming council meeting in, I think, the next month or two. Um, and, uh, one of the things they're trying to do is establish this friendship, uh, city agreement with, uh, Taichung, uh, Taiwan. Um, there's been some communication from that, um, city, uh, and also an invitation for Millbrae, um, representatives to go visit there. Um, so that's something that they are considering and as well as, um, perhaps a, uh, building a Japanese garden along the Spur Trail over near where the skate park is across from Magnolia of Millbrae. Um, and, uh, it would sort of open up to this portrayal. So I'm sure we'll see those ideas, concepts, um, coming forward in, in the next, uh, month or two. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Councilmember Riley.
Thank you. Thank you for everyone sitting up a whole night with us. And thank you for Lillies restaurant that opened for more of forty years. And sorry about your loss. Please accept our condolences.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Riley. Um, so attended the CCAT meeting. Um, there's a continued discussion, as you all know, uh, on ways to help, uh, the transit agency with the fiscal cliff. Um, San Mateo County, uh, insisted that this county must be able to make our own decision to opt in, should we choose to opt in, uh, based on our poll and our own, um, our own ballot measure essentially, uh, to these multi-county measures to help fund these, uh, you know, funding gaps. Um, you know, many options are on the table still being discussed, um, including having additional half cent sales tax for the next ten years. Uh, some include parcel tax, you know, so, um, more to come. Yeah, but it's most likely that this, um, if anything can be done, uh, would like to require, uh, the California Legislature actions. And so, um, stay tuned, more to come. Uh, but we also want to make sure that our public transit, uh, succeed as well. Um, thank you. Uh, in the past week, uh, the MCC hosting a city employee luncheon, uh, right in front of City Hall at Constitutional Square. Um, always a great partner to the city and thank you so much. Um, and most of you showed up to that luncheon and also the, the sheriff's office as well. Thank you so much for joining us. Um, you know, thank you MCC for always, you know, partnering with the city. It's, uh, very appreciated. Uh, attended a Buckus Wine ten year anniversary this past weekend. Very well attended by many members in this community. Um, congratulations Buckus, uh, and, and Quentin, uh, for a very successful, uh, business in our downtown and very important, uh, location and also very iconic for us as well. Because this business not only is very successful, because, um, he also, you know, transcends that success into a community success by giving back to the community, uh, on a constant basis. So congratulations on that to, uh, Quentin Jay on a very successful ten year anniversary. Um, my condolences to, um, the Zhang family. Um, and also, you know, many decades ago, uh, he founded Lillie. Um, as you know, we have a very diverse community. You know, we have a very sizable ethnic community as well. And, and for him to be able to provide, you know, as a business owner, um, providing that, uh, sort of representation. providing that sort of representation, if you will, it's important to our city. You know, having that diversity, not, diversity is not only people, but as well as food as well. Um, and he uses his culinary skills and, and his love, you know, in, in how he prepare a meal for everybody. You know, he expressed his love through feeding everybody's stomach because nobody argues with good food. And, and that's how he make our community better. And that's how he spread his love to everyone around him. And that's why he is a man that everybody loves. And to that end, it's a great loss not just to your family, but to Millbrae as well. But he lived a great life, you know, up to eighty-two years old and he has done many good. And, you know, this is the legacy that he left behind to all of us. And I'm sure take comfort knowing that he has done what he intends to do as a man who loves the people around him. Thank you very much for allowing us to share him with you all, thank you all. So, and also, it's also with great sadness tonight that we shared the passing of former mayor, Doris Morse, who passed away on February twelfth. He, she served on Millbrae City Council from nineteen eighty-seven to nineteen ninety-nine and served as mayor three times and dedicated much of her adult life to public service. Even after she left the public office, her community, her passion to community service did not end. But I continue to serve on, you know, many different city commissions and committees, most notably on Sister City Commission as well between eighty-four to eighty-seven and then again from two thousand to twenty, twenty-one. So it's over twenty-some years, almost, almost thirty years, over thirty years, excuse me, of public service to Millbrae. And so we're deeply grateful of having Madam Mayor Doris Morse of many, many decades of service and dedication to the people of Millbrae and making all of us a better place to live. So her leadership, her kindness and commitment to our community will not and cannot be forgotten. So tonight, we are, she's going to have a celebration of life on Sunday, March sixteen, ten thirty at the Green Hill Country Club. And for all those who can attend, I would encourage you to have an opportunity to pay your respect to this giant who has given us our city so much. So to that end, tonight, we're closing the meeting at ten twenty-nine PM in honor of former mayor Doris Morse and also Jimmy Zhang. Good night, everybody.